Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's January 8th meeting. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. And accordingly, I'd accept the motion to accept the agenda.
Hello?
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's get to the first item, which are walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins? If you come on down to the table here, or in front of you in the table, identify your name and your address.
My name is Charles Callahan from 385 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate.
Good evening, Mr. Callahan.
Good evening. Happy New Year, too, by the way.
Happy New Year to you and your family. So, could you explain to the Board what your interests are?
Yes, I own the property there, and there's a restriction on the property. And I wanted to inquire about that, to see if maybe it could be lifted. My wife is sick, and it's come to a point where we need to build a certain type of home that would be better without stairs and all. So, this is something that's become kind of a big deal for us at home. So, we're researching our possibilities about having that restriction taken off.
And the property is on Cushing Highway. And I've talked to you, and it's the property that's about two properties, three properties over from the reservoir.
Yes.
Actually, the pond, actually. It's on the pond side. I believe it was town-owned at one point in time. Sean, I think you might have been involved when it was old antique. The town ended up somehow taking it. It was torn down, and then there was a house built in the back by your successor, or the predecessor, rather, who owned the property?
Yes, correct.
And there was a restriction, you explained to me, put on it, saying that it could not further be...
Subdivided.
Okay. And you're looking to see whether or not the Board, or the town, or what would need to do to further do that, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I haven't looked any further, other than, you know, talking with you, Mr. Callahan. I don't know if anybody on the Board knows the property, but, you know, what we could try to do is at least look into it. I know there could be some hurdles. Jim, I'm not sure if there's something we can maybe take a look into, the deed, when it was... When was... Do you know when the deed was? Did you have a copy of that?
2002.
Right. Might be helpful to have a copy of the deed...
I have one here.
...for people to look at.
Yeah, if there's anything I can provide to make it easier for anybody.
Okay.
Just, you want to subdivide, or do you want to build on your existing property?
Build on the existing property.
Okay, so...
So, I would need to subdivide to do that, because I would want, need to sell my main home to afford to build the next house.
Okay, so you want to make another property, sell your house, and build a different type of house on the other piece of property?
Yes, just a smaller house, simple.
I would have to check with council how the town would remove a deed restriction that they put on a piece of property.
Okay.
My gut feeling would have been, would take at least a town meeting vote, but I don't know for sure.
Sean?
I remember this quite well. An abutter came before us, and he was very concerned about the reservoir. And that's nothing to do with you at all. And there were people that were looking to make a horse farm there. So, the subutter got very nervous, you know, where it's so close to the public reservoir, that he got the current Board at that time to go to town meeting, to buy both properties, put deed restrictions on, and chop off excess land, and then resell the properties. So, those things were done. And then, Mr. Callahan, like you said, second or third owner on that particular home. Everything else, you said, was perfectly correct. The house was torn down, there was a bond on his property and so forth. But that was the idea, to protect the drinking water. That's why the abutter behind Mr. Callahan was very, felt very strong that the town should take these properties over, and just to prevent a lot from happening there. Not so much cutting a house lot into two. I don't think that was his intent, you know. But, you know, to stop a big horse farm is what he was afraid of.
Fair point.
And the town meeting, was the town meeting, the board voted, if that's correct.
Just one of the... Do you have a copy of the plan of what you want to do?
No, just a rough idea. I don't have anything with me today, but on my drawing board at home, I have all these, you know, designs I've been working on.
I mean, at some point, that's going to come...
Yeah.
Have to come out, so we know you're not...
Yeah, those are already...
...40B or something.
Those are already pretty much established. I just have been doodling myself on my computer, but it's looking pretty good, and it's got us pretty excited about it. We also could entertain discussing possibilities. We have a lot of land in the back that abuts the resource area, and maybe offering the town, for consideration, some of that land. That really doesn't do too much for us, but I understand it's got the water that feeds the wells, so it could be the second part of an important equation back there.
Well, let's do this. We'll have town council take a look at what the procedure would be to do something like that, if it were to happen. Because I'm not sure whether it's the authority of the Board, or whether we're dealing with town meeting altogether. I think probably, Mr. Callahan, the next step would be for you to kind of finalize what exactly you're looking for, because whatever the procedure is, that's just the procedure. You're still going to have to go through that if you so choose.
Okay.
And I think, you know, you're going to have to present exactly specifics about what you're looking to do.
Okay, yeah, there's already an existing structure now. We just have to add a little bit to it, to make it more friendly.
I was just going to say, at the same time, you should probably talk to Neil Duggan or Bob Vogel, to see if it's through, do you frontage setbacks, all that? Do you... I don't know, do you... I forget. Do you have enough property to do that?
Yes, we have about 460-some-odd feet that front the highway, so there's plenty of frontage.
Probably just if you have a chance to stop by and talk to them. Anyways, just for a little guidance.
So, you mentioned Duggan?
Yes, Neil Duggan or Bob Vogel. Bob Vogel is the building commissioner and also the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
So, there are two offices down that direction, so.
Super.
All right, well, again, thank you very much, Mr. Callahan. Appreciate it.
Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
You, too.
Any other walk-ins? All right, seeing none, then we're going to go at 6:10 to the 6:10 report of the town administrator. Jim, good evening. Happy New Year.
Evening. Happy New Year, everybody. Glad to be back. I made it through. I've got a few things tonight.
No storms, like it was a year ago, for your first two, three days?
Yeah. It's been a little easier start to this year than to last year, but it's still early, so we'll see. Couple updates real quick. The water, the Board should have a water update. Add your packets. I got it late this afternoon. The water treatment plant work is still on schedule. The short version is, we plan to take the water treatment plant out January 21st, the week of the 21st, to begin work on the sand filter and the treatment plant. Connections to wells 17A and 18B are being completed. We are still waiting final approval from DEP on the well 18B treatment design, but we've spoken to them. Kevin, we don't expect any big issues with that at this point, and so that should be coming soon. Kevin and Sean Anderson will be in at our next meeting to give you the full update, but right now, that project is on schedule to get it shut down in time, get that work completed in time. Secondly, I'm pleased to let the Board know that we have reached a tentative agreement on all four of our labor contracts that are out of date. The last union will ratify that next week, so those should be before the Board at the next meeting, on the 22nd, I believe. And then, they all expire a year and a half after that, so we'll be right back at it. But it's good to know that we got all those contracts done, and we've settled all four of our outstanding labor contracts.
Good.
For fiscal, Ekalia 2018, the final grant total for the town is $5,222,855.40. That's a pretty good total for this year. That's a lot of hard work by all the town employees, all the town departments, so thank you, and congratulations to them for that. We're already starting on 2016, but it's going to be hard to talk 2018. Figuring we've got a couple of large grants.
2019.
2019, sorry. Going backwards.
If you can get more money in the past, we'd be happy about that, too.
Money's worth more in the past, too, isn't it? So, that's good, and we'll keep working on that. We are in talks with Senator O'Connor about, we have some money in bond authorizations. Although that is not grant money, we're working to try to free some of that money up. There's some money for the senior center, and there's money for the water treatment and the water distribution system. So, we've been talking with them. He's trying to set some meetings up with us, with the state, to try to see if we can shake some of that money loose. We had a ratings call today on our debt issuance with representatives of our financial advisor and standard and pores. We're going to be issuing about $8.4 million in general obligation bonds, and rolling about $8.6 million in bands over later this month. The bands represent almost entirely water projects. We are looking for funding through the Clean Water Trust, which, as you know, is a low to no interest loan, rather than going to get a market rate loan. So, we're going to roll those at this point. The $8.4 million is ESCO projects, a piece of the library, some full shore protection, and various capital items that have been approved over the past several years. We are going the 17th? No, it's the 17th to get bids on that bond issue. We did put the bid specifications out for the fireboat that was approved at town meeting. That bid opening is set for the 31st of this month. We'll see how that comes in. And finally, something for the Board to consider, whether they want to take something up. The Governor has signed into law the Short Term Rental Bill, the so-called Airbnb bill, regulating short-term rentals in the Commonwealth. In a nutshell, anybody who has a short-term rental will have to enter into a statewide registry that the state will run. They will also issue certificates to those people. Specific to us, a city or town may impose, by a majority vote of town meeting, a local excise tax of not more than 6% of the total amount of rent, except in cases where the rent is $15 or less, and they're exempt. A community may also establish, by a separate majority vote of town meeting, a community impact fee of not more than 3% of the total rent for each transfer of occupancy of a professionally managed unit within a two- or three-family dwelling, including the operator's primary residence. That fee is paid to the municipality. The excise tax is paid to the state, which then sends it back to us quarterly. The community impact fee, not less than 35% of that revenue must be dedicated to affordable housing or local infrastructure projects. We're still trying to get some good definitions of what that actually means, but that's the wording from the statute. And also, the town can adopt a bylaw regulating short-term rentals, how they have to report and things like that. In order to do this, we would have to open the town meeting warrant if we wanted to do it in the spring. I will send you out a memo that I have on this for you to review, and I think we'll put it on the agenda for next week for you to talk about. But I did want to put it on your radar screen, because it is a topic of conversation. It has passed. The one wildcard for us right now is, we really have no idea how many these are, what type of revenue that it would generate.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have for today, and ready to move on.
Questions from the Board?
That law, it doesn't apply to anyone under 14 days of rental, so if somebody just rented it out for...
Yeah, I believe it's a short term, if you only do it for a short term in the... Yeah. I have about a four-page memo, so you can have the whole thing.
Okay. And I would like, well, when we have the discussion, is maybe thinking about making... If we were to go forward with that, to make, I know you won't like this, but to dedicate that to perhaps an infrastructure fund in the town, since we have made that such a priority. I know you don't want to have...
I mean, that's up to the Board.
That's a discussion.
Yeah, that's for you.
So, just putting it out there when you're thinking about it.
So, Jim had called me about this, and that's what I said, put it in your report, because what I wanted to see is, the next meeting, we have a discussion about it.
I think we should.
Because I think there's a lot of moving parts at this point, to try to determine when we should do this, or if we decide to do it. So, I figured the next meeting, we'll have it on the agenda to talk a little more fully.
And just to Karen's point, that is not uncommon. When I was in Noah, we adopted the meals tax, it was dedicated to OPEB. Several towns have dedicated it to capital, to OPEB, to various things. So, it's not uncommon. It is, you know, not great from a management standpoint, that you're tying up your money, but it was out in the past. It's not...
Is that 14-day limit per occurrence, or per season?
Per season, I believe.
Per season. Yeah, so if you want to rent a couple rooms for...
You went away for a week and rented your house out while you were gone.
Wouldn't affect it.
That wouldn't affect you, yeah.
All right. Wait.
Good.
Good. Jim, thank you. Let's move on to our scheduled items, which is a presentation, a report on the coastal community assessment. Is Carrie here?
She is.
Carrie, good evening.
I'm good. I'm good.
Brad Washburn. Brad, good evening.
Good evening.
Director of Planning and Development. Carrie, you're the project manager for CBI.
So, I am just going to kick us off here real quick. So, we, I believe the Board has copies of the coastal community assessment. This was prepared by...
Brad, can I just interrupt you for just a second? Lorraine, can we get our computer guy here? Because I've got nothing but white, Sean has nothing but white, and I was just curious if there's somebody...
Let me take the...
Somebody could just...
Let me take the...
Do you? How about you? Are you okay?
No, you just have to page down. There's a blank page in the document.
No, it's all white.
Oh, mine's not. Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry. I'm only asking because it's the start of the meeting, and Sean has one, too. Sorry, man.
Here.
Yeah, you want this one? Tony and I can share.
Thank you, Tony, for sharing.
You're welcome.
Yes. He was raised well. Like, I apparently wasn't.
I'll take yours, too.
Sean, you and I can share.
Thank you.
Speak to me.
All right. Thank you, Lorraine. Sorry. All right, now, please begin.
So, before most of you, is the coastal community assessment, prepared by Consensus Building Institute, of which we have Carrie Hewlett here tonight to talk through kind of her findings from this report. But I just want to give you a little background as to what this was. So, following, I believe it was the March Storm of last year, EPA and the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy reached out to the town, and actually provided resources that we provided, and we matched a little bit. But we got resources for CBI to go out to the community and essentially interview or poll a list of stakeholders, interviewees, to really, to get a sense of what they thought about our efforts to date, kind of the issues facing the town, and the town's response to date. So, I think, you know, as you go through the full report, you'll see it's broken up thematically. It talks about kind of local government, emergency response, kind of overall approach to, kind of our macro approach to our coastal issues. So, you know, Carrie's going to kind of walk you through a summary of that, and there are next steps that we can talk about when Carrie's done. There's been involvement, not only from our departments within planning and development, but also the Coastal Advisory Commission is involved with this as well. So, I think it's an exciting, you know, the findings in this are interesting. I think there's several things on here that we can pick up and run with, following the conclusion of this, and just, you know, excited to hear kind of what Carrie has to say tonight. So, thanks.
Just, can I ask Brad a quick question, please? So, Brad, was this a planning board initiative?
No, so actually, we were approached. So, it was following the March Storm. I wasn't that clear. I apologize.
No, I heard that.
So, we, this is when we still had, Nancy Durfee was still working here, I believe. It was Trish Garrigan at EPA reached out to Nancy and said, "Wow, you guys have a lot of impacts. Saw you guys on the news. You know, we would be willing to donate some funds." Lincoln Institute contributed some funds as well, to kind of do this public process, again, to kind of assess what folks thought are the pressing issues, and how the town is responding to those. So, that's the genesis of where this started. Again, it started in the summer, continued into the fall, in terms of the interviews...
So, the resource officer is the one that requested this?
Well, it was something that just kind of laid itself in our laps, if you will. But at the point of contact it started with was Nancy. Maura was involved.
Yeah, I can expand on it a little bit. And Nancy brought it to both Jim and myself, just being the liaison to the CAC and the chair at that time. We thought it was a good idea, you know, to solicit residential feedback and engage the community a little bit with the thought process that, as we engage our community members more, it may make it not easier, but maybe a little bit less difficult to get initiatives, you know, forward along the coast. So, that really was a bit of a swat all.
Great.
Great.
You're on.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, I brought some copies of the executive summary, so I don't know if you would like them, and/or if I can pass them out to anyone else here who might want it.
We have them.
We have it on our screen, but if anybody...
I'll take a copy, because my eyes aren't that good.
Is it okay if I just pass them?
Actually, it's coming back to you. Here's this, buddy.
Anytime.
I've got it coming right now, sorry.
We're back. All right. Okay, it's all right. It's nice to have these.
Absolutely. That's great. Lorraine, thank you.
Pass them around.
Just the executive summary.
Well, thanks again. I'll just wait until you've got, until you're all set.
Did it happen again?
No. I'll bring the show back.
Actually, I'll take one of those copies.
Okay.
Let's go back. You need that.
Never mind. I'll take this. I got this. All right.
Great. Okay, thanks.
Proceed. There you go.
Well, let me just say a bit about how I went about doing this assessment, so you know where these findings came from, and I guess a little about myself, too. So, I work with the Consensus Building Institute. We're a nonprofit organization, and we help groups collaborate together. And often, the first step in, that leads into that kind of collaboration, is an assessment of some kind. So, often, those assessments take place through interviews, sometimes through surveys, often just through our own research. But obviously, we need to know what this group is dealing with before we help them. And so, EPA knew of this, because we work with them. Same thing with the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy, which is how this group came together. So, I work mostly with municipalities in Massachusetts. That's my area of expertise. I also do a lot on climate and coastal issues. So, that, this is an area that I work in, and again, why I think I was approached for this. So, the way we went about this is to, at the time, speak with Nancy and with Maura about the fact that the town has invested in a lot of research into its own vulnerabilities on the coast. And those researchers go out, they do really good work, and they come back with recommendations to all of you about what you might do. But the question remains, what should we do? What, where should we allocate our resources? What will our community actually support? So, fundamentally, I hope, what this report does is helps guide some of that, because you've been given so much advice from experts about what you should do, there's no way you could do it all. And you have to pick and choose, and you have to figure out where to put all of your resources. And I hope that this assessment helps you figure out where to do that, you know, where to follow some of that expert advice that you have been really fortunate to get. In many ways, Situate is in such an enviable position, in terms of your knowledge of your own vulnerabilities and options. Many towns, you know, would die to have that kind of information, so. So, that is the background. So, let me just say a little bit about how we went about this. As Brad mentioned, I was given an initial list of people to speak with, who would represent a range of perspectives in your community, a geographic range, a range in terms of what they think about what's going on in the coast. And I started with that initial list. I interviewed those people, and I asked all of them, who else should I be talking to? This is our standard methodology when we do these kind of interviews. So, in the end, I ended up with a set of about 41 adults. So, I say over 40 people. There were some children, actually, that came with their parents to a group interview at the school. And I do think that they represented a very wide, and I hope, comprehensive range of perspectives of the people in your community. Some were inland, some live inland, I should say, some live on the coast, some don't live here, but they work here, some run businesses, some manage businesses. So, I think it was a nice, I hope it was a nice mix, and I feel pretty confident, because by the end, I was hearing a lot of the same things, and that's usually when we know that we've gotten a good range of perspectives. So, the list of people that I interviewed is in the report, but these reports can only, these assessments can only be done if I guarantee confidentiality to the people that I interview. So, I always list all the people that I interview, but I try to then aggregate all of the findings, so that what people shared with me in confidence remains in confidence. So, as you go through the report, the first section is on that methodology, how we went about it, and I've just described that. And then, we go into the findings. And the findings are really my attempt to relay to you what I heard in the interviews. And I just want to point out a few things in the findings, and I name these in the executive summary, so I'll just highlight them here, but there's a lot more depth, of course, in the full report. So, the first is just that the people generally feel this tremendous connection to Situate, and really love this town. And talking about, talking with people about it was, I have to say, it was a meaningful and often emotional conversation, because of the way people feel about the town. That said, people are nervous, and they're worried, and there is a lot of anxiety about the coastal issues. And there, that leads to this desire to see the town have a very clear strategy about what to do. So, you'll see later, when I talk about recommendations, that my first recommendation builds on that desire and really demand that I heard from people as we spoke with them. The next really strong finding is that the community is really sort of very proud of its resilience, and that overlaps, though it's not entirely related to emergency response, but is really pleased with the fact that though the, a lot of people described it as, we get hit, we get knocked down, but we get right back up, you know? And it's just this sense of, we are resilient people. And there's both the pride in that, but then there's also, again, a little bit of worry and anxiety, that maybe we are a little too confident in our ability to be resilient, and maybe things are changing to the extent that we won't be able to get back up the way we have in the past, again, leading to this desire to have a really strong and cohesive strategy. So, a lot of people talked about, in their, in the conversations with me, saying that they, not everyone, a lot of people are really quite unaware of what the town has done to investigate and understand its own vulnerabilities, and the solutions that might be available to you. Those who are aware of that are impressed, I would say, for the most part. Some critical, of course, and have different criticisms, even if they're overall impressed. But I would say that some, people need to know more about what you know, and that will help, I think, feel some confidence in the ability of the town to bring together this strategy, to know what you've actually done, and what are the results of that work that has happened. Because there was a really mixed sort of understanding among the people that I spoke with about what has been done to this point. So, let me go to the recommendations, and then just leave some time for you to ask some questions. The first recommendation that I have is to develop that strategy. This recommendation is informed by the work that we do as collaborative process managers. We help people try to build these kinds of visions and strategies. And so, I've laid out in some detail in the recommendations, a process that you might follow, or a process like it, to try to build that strategy. Now, again, you are building from a place of strength that a lot of communities in your position are not, which is to say, you already know a lot about your vulnerabilities, whereas in other communities, they have to start by saying, who do we hire to help us know what our problems are? You, on the other hand, already have that. You, on the other hand, already have that. So a collaborative group that includes a broad range of, of, of community members who would be seen as representative of the full community, I think would be very powerful. I, I suggest that the selectmen, one or two selectmen would sort of take the responsibility to, you know, take the charge to oversee this, but really delegate the work to the Coastal Advisory Commission. I think they're in a really good position to lead this kind of an effort. And I laid out in the report what I think would be roughly a year and a half of work to do that. But it would be highly inclusive of the community. And I think that those two things, both having the strategy and having it developed by the community in partnership with the leadership, would be very powerful because it would meet that need that people feel, not only to get the strategy, but to be part of designing it. So that's the first recommendation. The second, and I think that the CAC has already taken this up, so Brad, you might want to speak to this, but again, you have a lot of information. You have a lot of information out there about, sorry, research that's happened. But it's, it isn't really easy to find in one place. And if someone wants to, if anyone, any of you or the town administrator or a, a community member wants to know, what do we know about our own vulnerabilities? It's, that's actually a hard question to answer, not because you don't have the answers, but because it's hard to get all of that information in one place and have it, and to make it understandable to the common person, right? So I think I suggested that someone do that work to gather all that together, do some summarizing, and put it in sort of a simple document that anyone could pick up and understand. And I believe the CAC has already gotten going on that. So you could say.
Yeah, I can touch base or talk about it at the end. They're actually, whether it's CAC or department, is actually working on a number of these things already. So it's, it's great to hear that we're starting to tackle some of the things that the community has identified as issues, but I can.
Great.
Get to that. But in relation to that, one specific item, Kyle Boyd, our new coastal management officer, has been working with members of the CAC to, to create a document that does just that, summarize what we've done already and kind of bring together all that good work in one place that can then kind of point you back out to those resources as, as appropriate.
Thank you. I also think one of the, that, that document, its existence would be beneficial to a lot of people for a lot of reasons, but it would be critical to that first recommendation of bringing together a collaborative group to do the cohesive strategy. They would need that in order to do their work. So I think those two go together nicely. The third recommendation I have is that, is to convene community conversations about managed retreat. The reason I say this is that I, I don't think there was an interview where this topic did not come up. It is on people's minds. They're talking about it to each other. They're talking about it online. They're talking about it in their civic organizations, but they're not talking about it with each other, with their neighbors, or with the leadership of the town. And I think that creating a space where people can talk about this very challenging and very difficult possibility, not to say that it should happen, but to say, we should make a space for us to have conversation about this, I think would be a really, a really progressive and valuable move on the, on behalf of the town. The fourth recommendation is to review, update, and document the emergency management protocols for coastal storms. One thing that was really interesting in the interviews and unexpected is that while almost everyone talked about how impressive the emergency management work is in the wake of storms, there was a lot of concern that it's not sustainable because it depends so much on the volunteer work of everyone who helps. Not everyone, but most of the people work, who work on it are volunteers. And it, I don't think anyone worries that you won't have volunteers in the future. I think they worry that a lot of the knowledge of how to do this work is, it is really nowhere else but in the heads of some of those volunteers. So I think it would just be a really valuable effort and not a huge lift to get the people together who work on this to say, where do we have some gaps in our documentation? And where do we need to maybe create some redundancy in case someone is gone or isn't available? And I, I think that would just, you know, put you in a stronger position because it's clearly a strength of the town and you would want it to be a strength going forward. So those are the four recommendations that I have. I think the only piece that I forgot to say is that when people are talking about the coast and, and their desire to see this, this cohesive strategy, there is a particular emphasis on the downtown. So I have mentioned in here that if, for some reason, you decide to pursue this recommendation to create this strategy, but it feels too big to do the whole coast, you know, your, your whole, sort of all the neighborhoods, then I would highly recommend that you just prioritize and start with the harbor. Because in the absence of the strategy for the harbor, people feel like Situate is not in a good position. So I just wanted to add that because I, it's, it would be nice to do the whole thing, but sometimes that's a lot to bite off. So you might just start with the harbor. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Brad, or if you have any questions.
Did you want to add Brad before I turned to the board?
Just quickly, so I, again, we have already begun efforts on some of the items that Carrie mentioned in the report. I think it's an important point to kind of understand that the, the kind of holistic plan, wrap all this together would be a useful piece. As you note in here, oftentimes municipalities go after grants, out of necessity, it's opportunistic, you know? State agencies create new grant programs and you kind of have to run after them. I think Situate is positioned nicely. I think there's a lot of good work that they've done. I think there's a lot of solid recommendations for what we should do along many of the sections of our shoreline. That being said, I think there's a lot of merit to having, you know, public input vet those decisions and figure out how we prioritize and how we would eventually fund those. So I think there's a lot of merit to that recommendation. I mean, all, all the recommendations have merit, but that one in particular. You know, again, we already are underway on the, the document that will summarize our, our previous kind of activities and point people out to different studies so that it's, there's kind of a clearinghouse of, for folks so they can see what, all the good work that we've done to date. You mentioned the harbor, that we should focus on the harbor. Just a few months ago, we received a planning assistance grant from E, the State Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to do kind of a resiliency master plan for the harbor. So I see that. While that may not be, I think that's at least a good starting point. What I would like to see, and we're in conversations with other state agencies and regional planning agencies, is can we augment that and kind of even put more resources towards that study so it can be everything that we want it to be to have those discussions about long-term economic and climate resiliency for the harbor? Trying to forget, think of the other ones. Lastly, I mean, I think the emergency management piece, while that's important and it came up in a lot of your discussions, is kind of a little bit different, obviously, than something I'd be involved in directly. It'd be more dealing with the emergency management team, but good to know, I mean, it seems like it was more positive kind of reinforcement for those efforts. So again, I think a lot of good work is underway. I think this just reinforces some of the stuff we're doing. But again, it's, it's messaging, communication, and kind of involving the CAC, which I think will be critical to this, all of these efforts moving forward.
Questions from the board?
I'll defer, so.
John?
How long have you been doing this, Carrie?
I've been working in this field for about 17 years.
That's great. The only reason I ask, any surprises? When you were interviewing, what a great way to get information.
Yeah.
With a list of folks that, you know, some have lived here for their whole lives.
Yeah.
So were there any surprises when you?
I mean, content-wise, it's always a surprise, right? That every, every town is different, everyone has their, their, their concerns. So that, so to me, it's all a surprise because it's all new to me. So content-wise, I wouldn't say there was, there were a lot of surprises. I would say that in terms of the, the desire, the intensity of the desire to be involved, to have the opportunity to participate in the decision-making was high, very high. And that's not a surprise. Everybody wants that everywhere. But I, I would say that because people feel so deeply tied to Situate, that it's a place that people have history and legacy and they want to see, you know, people talked with some, really some degree of passion about the fact that they worry about being the last in their line to enjoy Situate. They just don't want it, they don't want to be that, or they don't want their kids to be that. So I think the intensity of desire to be part of the discussion. And, and I do think that, I'll just say, doing this kind of work, you don't have to involve everyone in order for the vast majority of the community to feel engaged. What they need to see is that someone who is like them is at the table. And so I think the, the value of doing the collaborative process in the way that we've described in the recommendation is that you very carefully select the representatives so that anyone who might come and say, hey, that group that's happening, is there someone at the table who's like me and representing my views? And because obviously, we can't have everyone at the table. No, we can do a lot of outreach, other kinds of outreach, but the real decision-making and the sort of difficult, sophisticated conversations, you have to have that full range of folks. And I think if you do, then you meet that need and interest that people express so strongly of having engagement and real valuable, meaningful input into the decision-making.
Thank you.
I, I thought that the summary was great, and I know how much work went into preparing it and how much work he did, so we appreciate that. I would, I would, in reading it, to me, one and two need to be inverted. Before you can start thinking about how to engage and how to make next steps, we really need to have that summary of the knowledge that we've already, I mean, it's, you know, hundreds and hundreds of pages of research have been done that I'm sure a lot of people don't realize. And that any group that wanted to dig in and say, okay, now, how do we prioritize this? Should have that document available first. So I'm really excited that that's already in the works. I, it actually occurred to me in reading this that, I don't know if we can leverage a graduate student in coastal studies or somebody to help work with that because it's, it's a fascinating from, a project. And maybe we could get some extra weight behind, or some extra hands to do that lifting. But that was, to me, I would just invert those objectives just because I think you need one, two before one. And I noted that the fire chief and his goals for coming year is going to be improving a lot of the documentation for emergency management. And I'm wondering if we can expand that to the SANS and to the other volunteers because it's, I think the information's all there, but you're right. If we can beef that up so that we could have it available to the next generation, that would be great. These are great next steps.
Maura?
Thanks, Carrie. I think you did a great job, and I think it's important for folks to know that it was a really diverse group of people throughout town that took part in this. What I think you've done for us is something that, like, we all know, we all have the inherent knowledge, as you said, and we've got the reports. We know, just as Karen said, the SANS folks have everything in their heads, but we don't have those processes really well documented to pass on. And I think this framework is a really good framework for us to work and move towards with, and also to engage the CAC with. Because I also think the CAC, you know, being a new commission, has struggled a little bit with direction. I think they are that representative body that you speak of, that, you know, we made sure that that group was a broad-based group from coastal, inland, conservation, business owners, people who work on the harbor, people who don't, for those exact reasons that you said and that you heard from residents. But what we don't do a good job at is advertising and communicating and reaching our greater population about that committee and what they do and what they, they can do. Or even about the report that we have, you know, we're just not really good communicators and we need to be better at it. So I think you've sort of provided us with great, I think your next steps are really good. I think the CAC is perfectly positioned to take that on with Kyle and Brad's leadership. You know, I met with Kyle and some folks from CAC a couple, before Christmas, before the holidays, and they're, they're really eager to get to that next step because they want to make an impact as well. And they've sort of been struggling, okay, where do we go to next? We need to prioritize all that information that we already have. So I just want to say thank you. And I do appreciate that you threw managed retreat in there. You know, that's a political hot topic for anybody, but at the end of the day, it's something that really, really needs to have a, we need to have a serious discussion about it. We've got some, some low-lying areas that nobody wants, I, I don't want to move anybody's home, but at the end of the day, where would we move them if we had to? You know, and what land do we have in Situate to provide to those folks if they need to relocate? All, all that information really does need to be addressed. So I, for one, am happy that you put that out there because I think it definitely needs to be addressed. So I just want to thank you. I know you've worked really hard. I know you've gotten a lot of feedback from a ton of people, and I think this is a really good next step. And I just, I want to thank you. I think it's a great job.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Just wanted to note too, there's a public meeting on January 30th at the library, where Carrie will be going over, again, this, this report in more detail for a larger audience. And that's at the library at?
Six.
Six.
January 30th?
January 30th, yeah.
So let's, let's start off right and make sure that we advertise that really well.
That'll be on our website, on Facebook, and all the other ways that we.
Okay.
To what extent is this information that's going to be summarized or utilized and placed into our master plan, Brad?
Well.
Own section, are we going to put it in like, you know, is it, is it something that would be useful or, actually be useful, I just, the question is whether I should go in?
It's definitely useful, I think. Rather than the master plan recreating the wheel, it's going to point to what we have now and this kind of, what will evolve into this larger public process. So I'd rather, again, rather than have something different in the master plan, I'd rather have it point back out to this, to this work, all of this collective body of work. And again, I think that vision will be something that wraps everything, everything that we've done to date, and then, you know, kind of any new things that come out, even this Situate Harbor resilience study. I think that will be embedded in this kind of larger effort as well.
Okay. Good.
And you're also going back to the CAC in the next couple of weeks, right?
Yeah, they have a meeting on the 15th that I'm unable to attend, but I am in communication with them to tee up kind of what they might talk about that I could be helpful with. So, yeah, they're going to come, come to this.
Good. The only other thing I'd say is I nominate Maura to deal with the, the conversation about managed retreat when it happens. I personally don't want to be there for that discussion, the first one at least.
I was so successful in Hummer Rock, why not put me on managed retreat?
But in all seriousness, it is a discussion that has to be had in the town. And, you know, it can't be delayed. It's going to have to happen sooner than later. It's a real issue.
We actually have a grant application. It's simply the first discussion on managed retreat that we expect to hear back positively in the next few days or so.
And, and Maura will be the liaison for that, right? Okay. Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the next item.
Can I just say very quickly that I've had, since I've sent this out to all of the people that I interviewed, I have gotten some feedback, including Chief Murphy helped me see a, a couple of things I know that I didn't have quite right. So I would welcome feedback from anyone else just in the coming week so that I can make a few quick updates and I'll send you all the final copy.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
All right. So now we're going to move on to the review, vote, architect plans for proposed senior center. I see Joel's here, Bargman, Principal Bargman, Andre, Andre and archetype. Is there anybody else here presently for another agenda item? I only ask because I just want to make sure we have enough seats for people who want to be here for the senior center. All right, I guess we have plenty of seats now. Come on in, if everybody would like to have a seat. Joel, do you need to set up anything? Are we seeing any projection?
All set.
Oh, great. All right. We'll let you sit down. Carrie, thank you again.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi.
Anybody in the hallway that wants to come in? All right. Fair enough. Linda, good evening. I'm going to turn it over to you folks.
Hi, good. Thanks for having us here tonight. So you know Joel, and he's been here to present before. And we also have Steve Kirby from Vertex, Stephen Shea from the Public Building Commission. So I guess I just wanted to say to begin that Joel and his team have done a tremendous job, tremendous amount of work and due diligence to get us to this point. And I think you'll see they've delivered a building design that, that meets our needs, the needs of the senior center now and into the future. Really has considered the needs, or the views, I should say, of the community, and as well establishes a nice synergy between the new senior center, there are creation building as well as, you know, the other natural and recreation and historic elements on the property, on the structure. So I really am happy with the product that we're getting. The Council on Aging Board has met and voted their approval on the project. And, you know, Joel has met with me several times, the board a couple of times, the Historical Society, the neighbors. So really, there's a lot that's gone into the result that you'll see here tonight. So I can turn it over to Joel if he's ready for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate being able to work on the project with the town. And just a little bit on the background of the project, the mission statement from Council on Aging has really informed the project, especially the issue of enhancing the quality of life, independence, and physical, emotional wellbeing of a growing aging community. If we were designing a school, you would expect us to have a bunch of demographic charts and cohorts and, and other comments. I have one chart, UMass did a really wonderful study that preceded our work. And you can see in 10 years from now, the senior population will be over 50% of the total population of the town. There'll be almost 6,000 seniors in town compared to 12,000. So it's one-third of the total population, but 50% of the, compared to the other age groups. 6,000 seniors, I couldn't have been set up better than the previous presentation. UMass pointed out how much, how strongly people feel about Situate and how many people want to remain in their houses, age in place. And that's really an important issue because if you have 6,000 seniors and they're aging and they want to age in their house, they need some services to help that happen. They need some services because it's beneficial for the community, beneficial for the property taxes to maintain their houses, et cetera, et cetera. The program for the community center, I know you can't read that, it's 15,000 square feet. It came out of, the senior center program came out of a survey that UMass provided. So I'm, the point that we're making is that it's a, data from the community informed how this program goes together, and it, it really is comprised of five benchmarks. Volunteering, having a, a building that folks can use that doesn't need all professional staff, because that's a great way to service economically, but it's also a good way to bring more people into the center. Lifelong learning in the arts, you'll see in wellness. Information dissemination's hugely important, and then social interaction. Before I get to the plan, we were in, required or requested to look at the entire campus of the former Gates Middle School. There's three wings, A Wing, B Wing, C Wing. This is the B Wing, which is the cover shot of your handout. It's 107,000 square feet, 15,000 square foot. Senior Center is about 10% of that total floor area. We were charged to also consider the Recreation Department. We did their program with the gym and their offices and their program spaces, about 25,000 square feet. So when you combine the needs of the seniors, the needs of the Recreation Department, you have about a 40,000 square foot program. You have about 107,000 square feet. It's about a third of the facility is. It's about a third of the facility is needed. It happens to be that the heating system and the cooling, the heating and power systems emanate from this wing to all the other buildings. So it's a bit of a difficult organism to begin to carve off elements and figure out how to make it work. As we looked at the existing campus, the issue is there are six different floor levels on what is ostensibly the ground floor level of the building. There are equal number of different floor levels on the upper floor. And even from the B Wing, the colonnaded building that you have is a sort of centerpiece and the gym, there's a six-foot drop in grade as you go across the site. And to get into the B Wing building, the former middle school classroom wing, you're six feet off the ground. So that's sort of a barrier and was pretty much a difficult starting point for the Council on Aging and the folks that we were working with on the design is, it's very difficult to get 100, 200 or more folks into the building and have that building be six feet up off the ground. In addition, the existing building has very wide quarters. It's designed for schools that discharge all at one time, so your hallways are sized for classroom discharge, not senior center use. There are ramps throughout the building. As you can see, renovating that would be no small challenge. Essentially, what we're left with if we looked at renovating, for example, the A Wing classrooms is structure. The windows are not adequate, the heating system is inadequate, there is no cooling system. The lights date back to the 1960s, the ceilings are equally old, the floor tile is old and asbestos containing, needs a tremendous amount of work. So our feasibility concept design concluded that not only was there a tremendous amount of space that we couldn't really use, we would either have to, well, we were taking down the A, the C Wing, which was that 1950s classroom on the west side of the site, but that only reduces your area down to 92,000 square feet. So you still have about 50,000 square foot of space to mothball if we contained, continued to reuse the other elements of the building while only accommodating the seniors and the recreation program. We did do many studies for the reuse of the building. We looked at senior center in the B Wing, we looked at senior center in the C Wing, we looked at standalone senior center while renovating the C Wing for other uses. And the conclusion of those studies was all of those ranged in the 25 to 27 million dollar range, which was obviously more than the community expected to spend. And we were spending money on spaces that weren't necessarily used. When you have an interconnected building and you mothball a space, you still have to put sprinklers in, you have to heat it, you have to put life safety systems in. So there's embedded costs even if spaces aren't currently used at the moment. So presenting this information to the Permanent Building Committee, a decision was made to implement a standalone senior center while renovating the gym that was the old C Wing for the Recreation Department. And then basically taking down the C Wing that was here and taking down the B Wing that's over here and the A Wing that was there. So we were left with the standalone senior center in close proximity to a Recreation Center so that they could have good interaction because there is synergy between the programs offered in those two spaces. This is a site plan with First Parish Road at the top. The main part of the plan, one of the outreach comments we got was the importance of the center green space. You can see that in this slide, and that has very mature trees. It's a beautiful impact from First Parish Road. And the new roads actually honor the old access road, and instead of it circling around, it comes in and it goes to the parking lot. That parking lot takes you to the senior center. There are also myriad pedestrian pathways to connect the building, the tennis courts, the Cudworth House, Historical Society. This campus to the Westerly Abutters and the west side of town, either through bikes or walking. And as well, this way, we're taking out the road that Central Park Drive is no longer a vehicle road, it's a pedestrian path. It's a little bit wider here because the Carriage House for the Historical Society does need to bring their carriages in and carriages out. But this becomes really a pedestrian, green campus with community buildings on the backside and parking sort of pulled back in order to preserve this beautiful green space on First Parish Road. There's another entry off of Cudworth that exists today. There's a parking lot here, this parking lot and this parking lot, total 80 spaces. It serves the Recreation Program, it serves the tennis courts, it serves the soccer field that's here, it serves the baseball fields that are here. There's a little bit of additional parking that we're going to be working with the Planning Department and DPW about putting on this side to help some of the overflow parking when the ball fields are used. And the Recreation Parking Lot and the Senior Parking Lot are connected so that when the seniors have a surge event, parking can flow here. When Recreation has a Saturday morning soccer or baseball event, parking can overflow. So you have a very flexible, usable, malleable campus organization with yet a third way in. So Public Safety will be very happy with the ways in and out to this campus. What you will see is that this area here is the existing B Wing, but it's not necessarily the existing B Wing. It's a replicated B Wing that is identical to what's there today, although it's brought down to grade so that that six feet of height that was difficult for the seniors to manage to get into the building, they can get in. You can see also that it's not on axis with the entry from First Parish. It's replicated and it's pushed over to the east about 30 feet, and that allows this access road to continue through and connect the two parking lots while not impacting the soccer field. And it provides a nice proximity of the senior center to the Recreation Center. And I'll show you what's in those two buildings. So here you see how it's currently oriented today, and we're moving it over about 30 feet to allow this road to continue on and connect these two parking lots. The senior center program sort of is designed around replicating the B Wing with the four colonnades, which is here, and that becomes the multipurpose room of the senior center, which coincidentally can be used by other programs. What we've done is we've organized the building so that that room, the kitchen and public restrooms are on the ground floor and the programs are on the second floor. So if you want to open this in the evenings, if you want to open this room for events in the weekends, people can do that without accessing the other senior center programs. So you have great security, great coordination of programming. You'll begin to see the five foundations of the senior center. We have admin, control as you come in, we have that support for information, outreach is here. You can get to outreach sort of discreetly so that when you're meeting with a counselor, when you're meeting with someone about special needs, transportation, other programs, you have some privacy. But this is information dissemination connected to the administration wing. This is multipurpose, supported by a kitchen. So this program, along with a bathroom and some shower facilities, really enables this building to also serve as a shelter during heat events, lack of power, cold events, some of the resiliency issues that will come up. This building is designed to help the town accommodate that because oftentimes when you use a gym in a school for shelter, school can't start again. Here you have, if the shelter needs to operate longer than school wants to be out of session, you can house a good number of people for showers, meals, or even overnight and not impact the schools. As I mentioned, the building's zoned by its public and its private, the five pillars again appear on the second floor, wellness, lifelong learning. You have program rooms, arts, current events, community spaces, conference rooms, classrooms, program spaces, activity spaces. So social, educational, health and wellness. And then some of the things we're designing in for future use. 2030 is not that far away. 2040, we don't really know what seniors are going to want. We don't want to have a building that's so closely designed to today's seniors that it can't adapt. So we've designed in this program some flexible program spaces. We know how they'll be used today, but for example, they have the ability to build a restroom on and an office on to this wing of the building. So when you have that 6,000 senior population and perhaps you have some programs for memory loss or other programs for seniors that need separate wing to the building, separate services to the building, the building can be easily adapted. We'll put the infrastructure in today, we won't build that out. But we're looking in to put money into the building that saves you long-term down the road and provides tremendous flexibility. And here you see how the building looks. The night, the B Wing with its gable and its four colonnades is brought down to the level of the green space. Not any trees are lost in the green space. And then behind the B Wing, sort of supporting it, is, are very residential volumes. And you can see it here, sorry, it's lighter than I anticipated, but there are three sort of house-like volumes behind it. The reason being is that the backside of this building seen by the neighbors, the abutters, it's seen by the ball field, you have a very different scale to the back of the building and the abutters side than you do fronting on the First Parish Road. And that sort of dichotomy tells a really interesting story, we think, between what's important and what the community told us was important. They really wanted to hold on to the architecture and the landmark of the Gates School while building on in a sort of secondary manner, the senior center. I did mention the Rec Center. We're renovating the gym, which was a later addition to the school. It has this really beautiful gymnasium that we're not really having to do a whole lot to other than repair or replace the clear story lighting. But on the lower level, this is a plan of the lower level, today it's all locker rooms. And it's really a dense series of lockers and restrooms. It's not the easiest renovation, but we're taking those out and converting those spaces to program rooms for recreation. In this corner, for example, you have the little kids program that has direct access so little kids can be brought into that without necessarily having to go through other program spaces. The main entry to the building is here, and that's close in this direction to the senior center. So seniors can come down here, use the fitness programs, they might take in a program space. Or folks using the Recreation Center can work their way to the senior center for a program that may use the multipurpose room. In this corner, we have Situate Cable, Community TV, which was a program we were requested to bring in to the building, along with the Situate Veterans Commission, which occupies a corner of the second floor of the senior center in a very synergistic and successful manner. So in addition to recreation, seniors, we have cable TV and the Veterans Department. So the current plan is going out to estimate, in early February, we'll have a very detailed design development cost estimate. There'll actually be two estimates that we'll be able to vet each other and rationalize them, very similar to a bid situation. The schematic design estimate was in the 18 to 20 million dollar range, but it's broken out. And the senior center is pretty much where it was targeted all along. The Recreation Center is about 4.5 million, where the site work costs are 1.5 million, and the demo and abatement adds up. There's quite a bit of hazardous materials in the building. If we reuse or we demolish the old Gates School buildings, we have to deal with this abatement cost, and that's about half of the $3 million cost. And then all of our numbers are including soft costs and furniture fixtures and equipment. The schedule's here, not to go through the detail, but we're aiming for town meeting in between today and early January, and town meeting, we have meetings set up with boards, with commissions, with departments. We'll be scheduling a public session at the communications and center at the high school. We'll be developing the drawings further so that we can take a very good number to the town meeting. And then pending a successful vote, go through contract or pre-qualification bidding and start on or about August of this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else before I turn it over to the board or? Questions from the board?
Who wants to start?
How about you?
All right. I'll start. So thank you, Joel. I know there were a lot of renditions that you've been working on since July, so thank you for listening. I think it, I think it really is, I think it's gotten to a point where it's evident that the committee, the Public Building Committee, as well as yourself and your organization has really listened to the comment, the feedback, that, comments and feedback that we have gotten from residents along the way. So first of all, thank you for that. I have a couple of questions. Curious, you know, a lot of scuttlebutt out there with regards to the historical aspect of the building. Can you share with us what the Historical Society shared with you when you went to meet with them? I think you met with them a couple of weeks ago, right?
We met with the Historical Society, yes, not the Commission yet, but we will.
Sorry, I tend to confuse them.
Yeah, we did meet with the Historical Society. We, they were, they were very much behind the project. They brought up the fact that they did need access to the Carriage House. That was incorporated into the, into the design. There, we went over them with what they would be looking at from, from their building, from the schoolhouse, as far as what the building looked like. We also talked about the fact that if we can salvage some of the components of the existing 1915 building, in particular the cupola and the spire, potentially some of the round windows. We haven't looked at their condition, and I've heard from some other people that the cupola may not be something that can be salvaged, but the spire can be. If we, if we can't salvage, we're looking to replicate and still keep that, that look of the 1915 building, B building from, from First Parish Road. So, you know, it was a good meeting, you know, it was, it was, we had a presentation, but it turned into more of a conversation, discussion, and, you know, we walked out of there with some good comments and their backing.
Great. Couple, another line.
Yeah, go ahead.
Also, would love to hear, and I know other folks will have other detailed questions, but Feedback Council on Aging. I know you said they approved it, but curious what the feedback was with regards to where the design is and meeting your needs, the programming needs, which is the whole reason why we're doing this.
Of course, yeah. Well, they've been informed, you know, and educated all along about what we would like to see, both now, what we're missing, what our limitations are, and also what we want to see in the future and what we'd like to be able to do with the building. So they were very pleased, yeah, Joel has, you know, like I said, he's met with them almost a full board, at least twice, and then periodically with others. And we've always talked about what they thought we could do in the future for programming and what we could provide for services if, given the appropriate building. So all of that was considered all along, and they've asked questions, but been very pleased with what Joel's been able to provide or what we've planned for. Parking, you know, certainly has been a concern, and it's been considered, revised a little bit, but, but breaking up the parking is fine and having the overflow, I mean, certainly 100 spaces versus 68 or 75, but Joel's been working on that in terms of trying to get the needed parking. The synergy in the building, the interior layout, everything is good, the kinds of things that we have wanted to see brought. The multipurpose room is something that, as Joel said, you know, is really going to serve the community as, as well as the rest of the building really for meetings and conferences, and it would be, we're a great host. building, really, for meetings and conferences. And it would be, we're great hostesses. We like to do that. You know, we want to be able to provide what anyone else might need beyond our day-to-day. So, but the board was, has been on board all along. They're very happy with it.
Happy with where it is?
Yep, very happy. So, it was unanimous. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, good. That's great. And just one last question.
Yeah, I know.
Recreation. So, it's sort of, can you explain why that's evolved to the level that it has? You know, I think we kind of looked at renovating the gym, but understanding, I think I need a deeper understanding as to what space we're taking away from recreation by knocking down, you know, the B-wing and the C, and whatever that one was. I think at the A-wing.
A-wing, actually. It was the A-wing.
So, we can articulate appropriately, you know, why we're proposing right now, not that it's been decided upon, but why you're proposing, you know, 4.5 million on the gym piece. Because I think, you know, we want to make sure we bring the cost down as close to where we had originally wanted to get it. So, I think it's important that we understand what's being removed in the effort to provide them with good space.
Right. Well, the first requirement was that part of the equation was to maintain the gym. And so, we were tasked with keeping that volume of space. Currently, the recreation department's in this little connector wing, and then they have several classrooms on this side, and mostly on the ground floor of that C-wing. The A-wing, I'm sorry. I just got back. These classrooms are extremely expensive to renovate. There's more space in the A-wing than they need. So, when we got to sort of looking at, that is the plan of the A-wing, and then having to keep the gym, the question was, well, we're then have the gym, which is 25,000 square feet, and the additional area of this building. And it just got to be, we were renovating way more than they needed. So, the decision was, well, there's more than enough space on the ground floor of the gym building that's currently occupied by locker rooms that aren't used. There's an exercise fitness room in the back corner, but the ground floor is not really heavily used in that building. And so, the realization was that one could not have to do a whole lot on this level, but you could take out the space on this level and then know, that's in this building, and then not have to replicate space in the C-wing. So, the main cost in that building is in renovating those spaces into program spaces here. Now, the other issue is that there's, this building needs a heating system, and ideally, it needs a cooling system. And that's being brought into the equation as well.
So, too.
Yeah. And the building's not handicapped accessible, so we're putting an elevator on it. So, I understand what you're saying, and we've been struggling with this, that issue.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong. We're modifying enough of the building as we brought up the current code and condition.
That's correct.
Of the older one as well. Yeah.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, I can piggyback on that. I was shocked that that number is over 50% of the price of building a brand-new senior center that's, you know, the same size. So, that renovation part really wasn't in my equation of what the cost of this project would be. And I know, I think Maura, I'm not speaking for her, but what are you doing? Because you're saying we're going to renovate it, but what does that mean? Where's the 4.5 million dollars going? I've been in that space. It's not great space. I don't even know if Rick wants. I mean, it's, it's down below ground. It's dark. You know, I don't know what Maura and Nick are here. They can probably comment a little bit more on that. But, what are you actually going to do to the space to make it better, other than knocking down walls and putting in new walls?
Right. So, on the gym level, as I said, there's no major-
Nothing up here, down below.
Yeah. Well, there is air conditioning being put in the gym.
You're going to put air conditioning in the gym?
Yeah. We pretty much air-condition all the gyms now because it really allows summer programming to take place. You don't have to do it, but it's a great opportunity. We would renovate the lower level, and so, we're looking at this building. And one recommendation was to cool that space. It's a recommendation. Don't have to do it. It's not required by code. On the lower level, we're putting in a new, there's a partial sprinkler system. There's no sprinkler system on the gym level. So, we have to put in fire protection. There's no current modernized sprinkler system. There is an old one here, but it's past its useful life. It's at a state where it can't be renovated, because it was actually, that one was put in when the building was built in its original state. So, the piping is rusted and needs replacement. The engineers have been through there. That sprinkler system can't be repaired. Life safety system. But, the biggest expense is taking out these lockers. Each locker's on a plinth, so they're taking out bathrooms. There's, doesn't look, it's dark today, but there's actually tremendous number of windows around the building. So, you will have a lot of light and air in that space.
Did you just say the biggest expense is taking out the lockers?
And so, there's a tremendous expense to take out all of this, because each locker's built on a concrete base. So, we have to, taking the lockers out is easy, but you have to knock out the base. You have to patch the floors. On these bathrooms, we have to take down all the plumbing. Those rooms aren't being used, so they're sitting there. They're being heated. They're, they're spaced. They're not used today. So, we're trying to figure out how to put that into a usable, usable condition.
I guess it'd be good if we got the details on what that is. You know, how much is a sprinkler system? You know, I don't know. The sprinkler system is $2 million. And that may make more sense to me than thinking about just moving walls around and taking lockers out for 4.5 million dollars, for me personally.
Also, I mean, like Joel had said, there is no mechanical room in that building, no boiler room, because it's located in the B-wing. So, you're almost starting from scratch with the MEP items. So, there is, there is cost there. But, we can give, we can give detail on all of that.
Yeah. That was a surprising thing to me. Is there a generator in the senior center?
Oh.
No, go ahead.
Not the current senior center, the new one. That's planned.
Yeah, we're planning.
Is that in these numbers?
Yeah.
That's a flow, that's it, too. It's not just 100.
It's a generator that allow it to be used as a shelter.
The other thing that struck me is the dollar per foot of the building to do the senior center. So, it's almost $600 a foot to build it, 570 or something like that? Is that normal? I mean, the numbers we've always thought about were, and I know I'm not building a house, but, but less than that.
So, just had this conversation with the town of Norton. They're shocked as well, and every community is similarly shocked. First of all, those numbers include soft costs, all your costs that go into it, it's not just the construction costs. The analogy, the reason I mentioned Norton, is he was, the town manager was so shocked, he started calling contractors and didn't give him my number. And every one of them said, oh, it'll be 500 to 600. Okay. We just bid the town of Thalmas senior center. It's exactly at these numbers. I mean, that, it's unfortunate. It's where the construction costs are today. You know, I'm the messenger. I'm not the creator of the costs.
Right.
Yeah, but zero and labor are up for sure.
So, what doubles it from someone that's building a luxury house in town with the same builder and the same appliances and-
Well, you know, it's prevailing wage. This basically broad, prevailing wage brings it to a more closely to a union-type project.
I understand that, but it doesn't double it. Does it? Or does it? Again, I don't know.
It adds at least 30, file sub bids and prevailing wage can add at least 30% to a public project. So, that's a lot of the cost.
Again, I'm just looking at it. This is the first time I've given it, and these are the things that are jumping out to me.
I understand. It's a shock, yeah.
Right. One other thing that I'll let it go. Can you guys give me your assessment on this, on the current condition of the Gates Building right now?
It was high threes.
My, the assessment, you mean of how worthy it is? I mean, our finding, and I think it was the finding of the previous architects that looked at it for the town uses, that structurally, the building's got structural integrity, but you're basically taking out windows, all the finishes. You're having to re-insulate, insulate the buildings. They're not insulated today. So, you have a structural shell that has integrity, but really, nothing else on the building would be worthy of having this kind of investment put in, and then having to go on ongoing maintenance in the future. So, if you renovate those buildings, you want to bring them up to a level that you're not constantly finding the maintenance on the roof and the windows and the brick. And, for example, the columns on the front of the building that are there today are, happen to be PVC columns, and they're coming off the building. These aren't plaster. They're synthetic, and they're not really, the windows are older. The, as was mentioned, there's a lot, tremendous amount of work to be done to salvage the building. But-
It's your interiors, your mechanical systems, and your building envelope. Structurally, you know, there is some, from what I read on some of the previous reports, there are some isolated areas that would need some structural repair. Appears there's some water infiltration has gotten into some areas, has cracked some brick on the interior and some of the stairwells. But, that's, that's not, that's not prevalent throughout the building. Like Joel said, you'd be end up with a shell. And insulation-wise, this is a massive, a good portion of this is a mass masonry building. So, just going ahead and insulating it may cause more problems, because mass masonry building, just white, a brick, were never meant to be insulated. So, you have to really be careful on what you do as far as trying to get and meet your energy code on a type of building like that.
I'll let others talk.
Karen?
I have a bunch of things. Some are bigger than others. One thing that I didn't see in the presentation of the elevations is the gym next to this proposed structure. And that's something that I really want to make sure we get the perspective right. I know you've probably thought of that, but there's no image here. So, if there's some way we could see the scale of a much smaller building than this next to the gym?
Yes, yeah.
That would be really helpful. I mean, I'm sure you've looked at the proportions, but-
The renderings are being done. We'll have those for the public presentation. We can certainly preview them to the Board of Selectmen before that.
Yeah, because I'd hate for it to be this big honky.
Yeah?
Yeah. The PVC, obviously, have they voted on this, or?
Yes, we have, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted, I wanted to point out something, just sort of a step back. When we looked at, was it 2016, 17, when the last, when the reuse study was, came out, the numbers to renovate this building are very similar to what you've reported tonight. But, my question on that is, that anticipated putting a senior center in here. When you thought about renovating the existing building for 25 to 27 million, did you feel that you had reached a point where the elements within that renovation would provide the services that you would like to do so? If you were to spend that kind of money, would it get there?
You're going back to the June 2016 proposal.
Yeah, but you've just put, as one of the elements that would cause, did I, did I hear that right? That if you were to renovate the existing, it would be 25 to 7, 27?
That's correct, yeah.
Which is consistent with that other-
Yeah, we talked about that at length, yeah.
I would clarify that. And then, in the one reuse study that was done before us, they put the senior center as a standalone building because they couldn't make it fit into the Gates School, because of all the issues I mentioned tonight, that-
The preferred proposal back two years ago did have, they put the senior center behind the proposal, the building, because that was the more ideal and the more conducive, both to the senior center and for the use of the building and the expense. If when Joel had first looked at the A-wing for perhaps integrating the senior center into that, I mean, it was not ideal. It was not ideal.
Okay. So, you ended up spending more money and getting a product that doesn't meet your needs as well?
I mean-
Is that, is that fair?
Yes.
The classroom constraints wouldn't fit the program for the senior center's needs, basically.
We ended up putting a senior center on a motivated school, which is-
Right. I just wanted to reiterate that, because it comes up often, and that-
It does.
I mean, breaking away from that classroom setting in that A-wing was kind of unfeasible, because all those walls were load-bearing, and you can't really put down walls.
Some smaller questions in the rec renovation. I couldn't figure out where the systems were going to go in the plan, because you're going to have to put all new systems in.
Well, on the roof, no, I didn't.
Oh.
There's a mechanical room on top of the roof.
On top?
I saw him, but now I'm like-
And-
And there's also a basement in this building.
There's nothing on the roof now, though.
Yeah, there's a room that pops up above the gable, and that's a mechanical space.
I never looked up.
Similar to the senior center, some of the MEP would be on the roof, kind of sheltered in there.
Can I just interject for a minute, folks? And I have to apologize. This agenda's a very aggressive agenda. We've got budgets. We've got, you know, as you see, different things. I'm actually supposed to have a hearing 15 minutes ago, 10 minutes ago. So, what I'd like to do, because I'm sure there's some questions in the audience, I'd like to suspend this discussion for now. Bring in the applicant, or the individuals for the hearing, and have the two hearings, and give you folks a break, people in the audience, a few minutes break, water, whatever. And then, bring you back to the table, folks, because Sean has some questions, Karen does. I'm sure there's some questions from the audience. But, I need to get to the hearings, because we are publicly noticing them. And you got to pretty much adhere to the, to the notice. What I'm going to do right now is I'm going to suspend the discussion for 10, 15 minutes, bring in the hearing, get those two done, and then reconvene in this issue, okay?
You don't have to leave.
In the meantime, could somebody ask the individuals for the first public hearing?
Yeah, they ought to be here for Grateful Haven. They're going to do it without their working employees.
Okay.
You've already prepared for the lives.
Okay.
This is the-
Took them 20 minutes just to even go over what it is.
Transfer of stock and change of beneficial interest. We didn't do that last time.
All right.
So, this has to be done. It's a technical change.
So, if we can just turn to the page on our-
What is this one?
It's a-
What page is that?
Oh, I'm down. Sorry. Hang on.
That's a Tondorf. They basically, it's just Tondorfs.
It's nothing new.
Which one?
Okay. I'm sorry, folks. If you want to have a discussion, anybody wants a discussion, please go outside. I'm sorry. We need to conduct this business to get it done quickly. Otherwise, we're going to be here a lot longer. Thank you for your patience.
John?
Yeah?
I don't know your password. You can type that in or switch computers back.
Did you say 37? You have 27.
Let's put that back.
That was for this one, yeah.
It's 37 on mine, too.
Page 39, okay. Hang on. So, this was, let's go back. This, these individuals came before the board a few months ago, if I'm not mistaken. They had made, so there was something that was omitted with the ABCC as part of their approval process, and now they have to come back to the board for a motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, questions from the board on this?
No, it looks like to me, it's just a procedural thing to approve the transfer of stock, right?
Yeah.
All the documentation has been provided.
All right. So, why don't we do this? How about if somebody gives me a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a transfer of stock and change of beneficial interest for the restaurant, on-premise common, particular, and all kinds of alcohol beverages, annual license held by Grateful Haven Incorporated, doing business as the Rivershead, a 17 new Driftway in Situate, Massachusetts, to the ownership of Cara Billado Tondorf.
Motion by Ms. Kirin, seconded by Mr. Vignani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's for, and I abstain. Okay. So, that takes care of that issue. Let's get to the next one, which is a 720 public hearing discussion vote, transfer of liquor license of Front Street Liquors to Kishen Inc., doing business Situate Package Store. And we have Attorney John, is it Meradian?
Meradian.
John, good evening, and welcome.
Good evening.
So, looks to me, from what I see, that your client is purchasing the building and the business?
Yep.
Is that fair to say?
Yeah. Essentially, Suhoas Patel is purchasing the business, Situate Package Store, 184 Front Street, is- as well as the real estate at the area. Today, we're seeking approval of the transfer, approval of Hamanji Patel, here with me as manager of record, and they pledge the license and inventory to Rockland Trust Company, as they're helping finance the transaction.
Okay. It's just a new...
I don't think so, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, is this a new business in the, as far as the ownership concern in Situate? Have they owned business here before?
This will be the first business in Situate, but they own stores in Abington and Hanover, so they are familiar with the alcohol...
Okay, so, I was going to say, is it liquor stores, or are they just, that's what they've...
Yeah, liquor stores.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can someone just help me out with what this property actually is?
Sure, it's Bailey's, right next to Teacase, it's now called Snappy's, or Captain Snappy's?
Oh, it is, okay, that's what I thought.
Something now, it's the Situate. So, let me just give you the gist of what we have here. There have been some violations here in the past, this property. And we take that very seriously in the board, I've been on it now for 12 years. Tony has, Sean has, and certainly my other fellow members. And I think what's, Karen and also Maura, I'm just saying...
They don't care as much.
They do care, we all care. But in seriousness, the thing that happened is that we've had a situation in the past where somebody inherited, or not inherited, purchased a business, but they inherited a violation, and we told them upfront. Because we take it serious, we're not necessarily saying that you got a clean slate. That's not to say that you don't, it just depends on what happens. And sure enough, there was a violation shortly after their purchase of the business, we were not happy. And what we've almost kind of mandate, or demand, and you do so at your own peril, if you decide not to, is to ensure that, you know, you get the most modern, make sure everybody's obviously tip-certified, up to date, even with the, what's it called, the license scanner? Scanner, and I'm not sure whether your business has done that before or not. I'll tell you right now, we demand it, because not only did that happen at that business, we had another violation in another business, and when they come before us for violations, obviously, we want to know whether you've done it adequately enough or not. And if not, then we take that into account. And I'm only saying that because we want you to be successful. We just don't want to have that violation, because it happens. And this prior, your predecessor, I think, personally, I think, had, there were some younger violations for kids. We don't want that, and you don't want that. And that's the reason why I read you the riot act now, because we, again, I keep telling you, we want you to be successful. You know, business is good downtown, it's good for you, it's good for the residents, and makes us happy, everybody's happy, that's all. So, that's my quick spiel, but I just want to make sure that, you know, the board does take it very seriously. So, we ask you, you be aware of that.
Hamanji is tip-certified, they do use ID scans at other stores, too, and there's no history of violations there, so...
Perfect, perfect.
And don't accept out-of-state IDs in Hanover and Abington stores.
Good, because there was another... Appreciate that, because that was one of the violations at another store, they had out-of-state, and unfortunately, we penalized them for it. They were saying, well, we didn't really know, even if we put it through, it's not our problem, unfortunately, it was their problem, and that's their responsibility, but Tony, I know you were quickly...
I just don't, did you say you have not had any violations at any of your other stores, ever?
No.
No, meaning no, or yes, meaning?
We had in a Hanover store, one time, when we started the business, so in a Hanover store, my husband, that time, we took the out-of-state ID. My husband's duty, check the ID, and he checked the ID, the ID is perfect, but the ID was a fake. So, that time, we decided, never ever take out-of-state ID.
It was me who checked the ID, I asked the gentleman for ID, looked at it, it was 22 on his ID. And I served him beer, went outside and offered some product, and it was a fake ID. So, from that day on, people, it was impossible for us to judge, so we have a policy to...
Because scanners don't catch it, right?
So, that's Mr. Patel, correct? Okay, just want to make sure for the record, that's...
Did you have the scanning machine, then?
No, so after that, we bought it.
We bought it.
You did not have it when you got the violation?
No, Hanover does not require to have scanners, but we do have it at Hanover. But that's, I guess, the most, after speaking with officers at multiple different towns, out-of-state IDs are the most common violations of the day, so we have strict policy, you know, they got to stay at it.
And that's the only violation you've had?
Yes.
Maura?
I just need clarification, do you have a, do you have a scanner, or no, at this new?
There is a scanner, there is.
Okay, great, thanks, I just didn't ever heard that, okay.
Karen, I thought you had your hand up, maybe not?
That was my question, thank you.
Sean?
Will you two be the only ones working, you'll have employees, if you have employees, they're new, and...
They'll have, they'll have about three to four employees.
Three to four employees, and strictly, like, we try to, everyone is like a chip-certified, and like that, yeah.
And I just, you know, we all share what John had said to you earlier, between five of us, we probably have 20 children, you know, so we will hear if that store is, you know, easy, even if you don't get caught, we will hear about it.
We have kids.
That's your kids, not mine. That's the reason why we tell you, because we want to welcome you, we want to be successful and do well. It's a great location, and, but we just want to, because we said this to your predecessor, and then a few things happened, not really happy with that, so that's why I say to you now, do that. Let me ask you another question, you're not intending to put an automobile out in front with an advertisement, like your predecessor?
I'm not aware of what they did, but...
Thank you, I know, that was something that they did after the fact, and I just, personally, I just didn't like, they advertised their business in an antique car out in front, and I just thought it was a little tacky, but, I appreciate that, okay. Any questions from the audience? Saying none, any further questions from the board? No, entertain a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the transfer of the common vic, all kinds of alcohol beverage license, change manager, pledge of inventory, pledge of blower to Kishen Inc., doing business at Situate Package Store for the premises located at 184 Front Street, Situate, Mass.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, and welcome to town, again, sorry to keep you guys waiting, I just have a...
Good luck.
Another thing, I got to reconvene again, but thank you very much, good luck. Yes, thank you, Jim.
All right, I promise I don't have much more.
So, back to senior?
Yeah.
Just two quick ones.
Dave, how are you?
Oh, she's a cutie.
I was standing on my tinsel, just for the record.
I see that.
Because I am Miss Smiles.
Folks, thank you for your patience, again, I apologize, it's just, when you have a hearing, you really are obligated to adhere to the time that you give a hearing, because you give notice and everything else. And like I said, we had a pretty, we do have an audacious...
Kevin, can you just see if there's anyone else out in the hall?
Agenda, fine.
For this, for the senior stuffs?
All right, so I'm going to get back to Karen, Karen was asking some questions, Karen?
I have one more question and one more comment. Just, right now, what are you proposing, the siding on the non-brick portion? It wasn't clear from the renderings, what is that?
It's primarily clavbered siding, it's synthetic, it's cement board, but it looks like clavbered, so it has a residential scale to it.
Okay, cool. I just, the comment I wanted to make is, this version, and I know how much effort has gone into fine-tuning and honoring the site, which is something that all along has been a goal of, you know, prior committees that have looked at this site, is honoring the historic nature. And I think that this version, and with closing off those pedestrian paths, really does honor the historic site of the town, and really positions this as sort of an anchor for our community. So, I really appreciate the work that that, went into that, because I know it was a long road to get to that point. Thanks, Karen.
Sean?
Some have been answered, some have been touched on a little bit, but I just wanted to, maybe you can elaborate a little bit. First of all, a real simple one, tennis courts, we go four to five, or they, five and stay in, not touching the tennis courts, or the track? Okay? The B Wing, completely gone, from the ground up.
Correct.
And the A Wing.
Well, the A Wing is, yeah.
Okay, all right. Yes, right, right, but, so, the new proposal is new from the ground up, and then you're remodeling the gym and down below.
That's correct.
Okay. The square footage of your senior center is what?
The senior center, as it's designed, is actually a little bit more, we had a program of 15,500 when you included the veterans' office in the building, and we're now at 16,300, or...
So, about 16,000 square feet?
For the building.
Taking down, how much? Not including the C Wing so much, but...
Yeah, we're taking down 80,000 square feet.
Eighty, so enough 60. And to Karen's point, it won't look like a person's garage is way bigger than their house?
I don't think so, no.
Well, A includes the A Wing as well, right?
That's correct.
And C.
The total site is 107,000 square feet, this is about 26,000, so there's 80,000 of other space.
Mechanical systems, two independent mechanical systems? And, what was Falmouth like compared to this? Was it a, was it a reno as well as new?
It's actually very interesting, it's a similar project, it's at the town center, it's next to the Gus Candy Community Center, so it's the same distance from their gym as you are from their gym, and they're building a new building on a site that was previously disturbed, so it's a, there wasn't a building to take down, but it's a 15,000-square-foot building, it's identical size, except it doesn't have the veterans' office, and same idea, the synergy between recreation and seniors is an opportunity, and they grabbed on to that, as is envisioned here as well. That project is corroborating a lot of the estimates that we're getting on this project. It's in construction.
I just, a little nervous, where we had just done the library, it was a much smaller project, and it was a much newer building. So, any, what if you get built in for contingencies?
10%.
And where is that here? Is that in the, is it in the 8.5?
Those numbers, we amortize the total project cost for the project, which include the contingencies, soft costs, building costs, and then amortize it across those components. So, that contingency is in there. Now, the 8.5 is the building, the site work is itemized separately in that, so the parking lot, the road, the site utilities.
All right, oh, so, all right, 3 millions in the demo and abatement, okay. I think that's it, John, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Other questions, Tony?
Do you have any?
You guys have asked a lot of, some of the questions that I had. I will say that one of the concerns I share certainly is with Karen, and that concern is the scaling. You know, now you're down a grade, as opposed to the six-plus feet above the building, and shifting it off-center doesn't really bother me as much, but I am a little concerned on the scale. This is not that much closer to the gymnasium, and it's going to dwarf it, and if it does, how's that going to look? You know, I did see some of your other renditions, I have to say, this is better, in that I think it certainly looks, well, looks the same, it's a replica, not the same, but fairly close to what it originally looked like. It didn't have to, but it at least had some kind of historical context within all the architecture that surrounds the green. The other thing I do hate, I do hate to see, I was the one that specifically had asked, is there any way maintaining the center building in some capacity? I really hate to see the building go. It just, you know, for some reason, I guess it's been here historically, but I think the way that you've designed it architecturally, it certainly looks nice, looks very nice. And, so, it's certainly a great change, the way that you've evolved through the process with the committee to do it, so... Those are my comments. I do share Tony's concerns with gymnasium, I mean, it's expensive. But the reality is, the way I see it, whatever happens with this building, Council on Aging, Heritage Center, Senior Center, this is still going to be out there. So, $3 million of demo and abatement of a building, and it's got to be dealt with. The gymnasium is a really huge asset for the town, for Rec Department, but also the town in general. You got to make it accessible, I mean, we got to modernize it. And the fact that it was never dealt with during the tenure, it's got to be dealt with now, because now we're opening it up to the public, intentionally for the public to use, not just for the kids. And we realized that there were some children, from an accessibility standpoint, it was a real problem for them to get from point A to point B, from C Wing to A Gymnasium, so I'm like, we need to do that. I am concerned about the locker rooms and the cost of that, it's pretty steep, and I realize there's concrete probably there, and jacking it out. I do realize that there are a lot of windows on that first floor, and some of the windows are actually covered over, or at least there's the, maybe four over, what are now blank, but frankly, it could be four over four, which is basically eight panes of windows. So, you're going to get a lot of light all the way around the building and the gymnasium, but those are my observations.
Just a couple last comments, first of all, I wanted, you know, the project is turning into be much more than just a senior center, you know, and the numbers are going up every time we talk about it. I think our first conversation, Sean and I said, or we're told that it would be like 1 to 1.2 million dollars to knock down the building. Now, it's $3 million. The million and a half of site work was much lower then, and I assume that's just the paving and the parking lots?
Site utilities.
Oh, and the utilities go into site work, okay. And now that the gym is becoming a bigger component of it, I just was hoping to get a little feedback from the rec department in terms of whether that's meeting your needs, or what your thoughts are in terms of renovating the basement of the gym, which I agree with John 100%, it's a huge asset to the town, and I love the fact that it's close to the senior center, because all the activities that can cross-pollinate there. But what is, how is that going to go, because you're, you're in the A Wing now, and you're going to be going back over to where we meet for the rec commission meetings?
So, we did go over this project, maybe two or three times, we met, late in the project, and it has certainly changed quite a bit since the first time we saw it, there was some kind of walkway in between, but everything has changed quite a bit. My first concern was, when they first gave it to us, that we were in the middle of the building without any light at all. So, I talked to them, and I said, I can't be in a pale, kind of place without windows.
They had assumed we were... So, they heard us, right now, I'm looking at it, and I think it's wonderful, to be honest with you, I think it will meet our needs. I think of it being as a town-wide, I think it will meet the needs of what we need for summer programming, hearing, air conditioning, I'm hearing, different things that I didn't know about. I'd like to be a little more educated on it. I asked for, you know, I'm not very good at square footage, I'd like to see like a 10 by 10, I'm more of a person on that. A room, I know what a 10 by 10 room is, and I know what a 2,500 is square. You know, so, I did ask for that, I think they're going to provide it, I haven't seen it yet, but I've been away, so... I think it is going to meet our needs, yeah, it's...
Okay. Great, one last comment that I wanted to have, you know, I agree with John to some extent, in terms of, I think all of us do, we hate seeing a building that's been part of the history be torn down, but I think you've reiterated thoughts that other people have said all along, that the building is not usable in its current state. It's just, it's nice to look at, it's nice to have the memories of it, but it's not a functional building, and it's not functional for any use that a school would want it for, or a senior senior would want it for, or even a town hall would want it for right now. So, it's a tough reality to come to truth with, but there's, what'd you say, six or seven grade levels, it's not handicap accessible, it's asbestos-driven, it leaks, ask any, any child that we have, it's, you say there's a few windows that leak, I would, I could get you...
Challenge you on that one.
You know, many, many thousands of kids that would disagree with you there. So, I think our heart is in it to say, oh, let's keep this beautiful old building that has memories, but functionally, it just is not there, and it would become, it's been vandalized, Jim, how many times since it's been closed? At least two or three times it's been vandalized, and as Sean's mentioned, it's going to cost six digits to heat, and make sure that the pipes don't boil, so, you know, our hearts hate to see it go, but our brains have got to say that it's the right thing to do, from my perspective, so... And I'm glad that you took, you're incorporating the look into it, I was a little sad, I thought those columns had more meaning than the PVC.
PVC.
That's not even attached to the side of the building right now, so...
That's, but that's such great information for you to share with us, because, who knew?
Again, it's our hearts and not our heads sometimes that are making the decision, so... Thank you for incorporating the look and feel, and I think, I think that's a... Thank you for incorporating the look and feel, and I think, I think that's a step in the right direction that we all needed to see. Sean?
Just one word you used, want, Tony. I mean, it's, I think everyone knows how I feel about the building. I mean, I went there for two years, but you cannot, you know, you cannot use it. Our school, you cannot use it. Not that you don't want to.
Yeah.
You just cannot.
Right.
Because of codes.
Right.
I just have one other on the demo. When you were talking about moving from one point five to three million, I think that was a lot due to the due diligence, and really digging into the building, figuring out there was a lot of asbestos and TCDs and the caulk, and there's a lot of remediation there. Did I?
We knew it.
One thing I was going to comment on, the replication or the attempt to replicate the original building. I'm encouraged, not so much by the expectation you're going to be doing it. In Green Bush, there was a building that was torn down, and they were originally going to keep it as a part of the project for Morning Glories, and they're presently rebuilding the bill, a building. It's a little larger scale, but it's certainly looks like it's part of the original farmhouse that was there. That was encouraging to see, trying to replicate something that was there. And I think if we're able to capture that in this project, that's why I'm saying the scaling is important, I think that would be interesting. Second comment was, the cupola is actually from 1934, wasn't a part of the original building because it was flat top. Yeah. I think you'd said it earlier, again, getting back to what was original, it's that square box building. The only other thing I was going to ask you, Joel, is the wing from A wing heading to the A wing classroom, where the rec is presently, that area right there, is it possible to keep that section? That's where your current offices are. And working that, because I think, if you could go to the, where you had the proposed building, or maybe going back to one of your slides, it might have been the site plan or preferred scenario or something. I was just curious to see if that was possible, to maintain just that wing, that extension into, you know, as a part of it, as opposed to tearing it down? Because those are offices. And I just didn't know whether or not that was something that would be possible. That right there in essence, yeah. And working it into the design, because I'm not sure how close that would be to the proposed, shall we say, senior center with the, as I'm not sure if it's a patio or not on that. I can't see from the size of this.
Yeah.
It was maybe a patio. It's not defined really on that.
But that's the only other thing I'd say, because you have office space, windows up above, and maybe that could be one way of blending it into, that's keeping that portion for the rec, because it's actually a really nice area.
The issues with that are that the second floor doesn't line up with the, this building, so it creates yet another obstacle. It's also when you take it down, there's no facade at this end, and then the whole backside of that doesn't really have a facade. So it's, it's quite a bit of work on the rear side of that building to maintain that wing. And, you know, a third of it is the corridor on the backside of the offices. So you do have an office here, Recreation, Mara's office is there, the Recreation Director, Assistant Director, but usable space wasn't that great in that wing, so it also happens to be expensive to rebuild the facades and that.
Okay.
Happy to quantify it and look at it in the estimate.
Just to say before we wrestle it down, because there may, even though it may not seem useful space for the corridor, maybe on the backside, it could be used as some kind of entryway, maybe it's a corridor to the senior center, a little closer to the senior, proposed senior center, instead of having that distance. The other question I have is, where were the utilities going in the gymnasium? I didn't see it in the plans here.
Where were the what?
The utilities, you know, the heating and?
Center rooftop.
It's going to be in the rooftop?
In that box on the top, Joe said.
There's a room in the basement.
Top left corner, there's a box.
There's a room in the basement.
There was? Okay. I just noticed there's little people, I see fire pump, water, electrical, I didn't notice it, but maybe I missed it. Storage and storage.
So Joel, is a room below the locker room?
You have, you have the fire?
Yeah, we have, the utilities are coming in here, the fire pump.
Right, now you're right, okay.
The electrical utilities, and then the heating systems on the roof above this, and these are shafts that come down from the roof for air and.
Okay. All right, I see. Thank you. Questions from the audience?
We get, if I could just point out, we get one other benefit of this, and that's we fix that intersection, because we want to close that road that comes out of the gym. That causes all kinds of problems. That's going to be closed. We're only going to use that when the Historic Society is bringing their carriage in, and otherwise, that intersection will be cleaned up. We can do some work on that, too. So that Center Park Drive is going to be gone.
Gordon?
I'm Gordon Price, forty-eight Manloch Road. I just want to compliment the architectural firm Joel and his staff, they've done a gentleman's job. They have listened to every concern, every suggestion, tried to incorporate them, I think the schematic that Joel has, I think, answered all those questions. And enough to bring up an old point, but it was not, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Council on Aging, I'm speaking on behalf of Gordon Price. It was not my desire to have senior center in this location. I preferred the driveway, I did a lot of other people, but it was the selectmen's request, desire that it be placed there. Though, we haven't done it. I think a viable plan has been developed, and I think Jim had some input in that, and I think this plan serves a lot of deans. It helps rec, it helps the seniors to coordinate activities with rec. And if it weren't, if we were to have the A wing continue, the B wing continue, what are we going to do with? You know, we could show, we could have put the senior center behind it, but you still get that monkey or that elephant on the road. What are you going to do with that gate's building? It's been, it's been described by many people as unusable for both things, because something may be done with it, yeah, at great expense. And I don't think the appetite in this community is to spend thirty, forty million dollars on that, on that building. I think what Joel has come up with, is it, is it, you know, a fair amount of money? Yeah, it is. But I think with the support of town administrator and the selectmen, because you've got to buy into this as well as everybody else.
But we own it. We are the ones who told you to put it there, right? So it's now our, we, it's a good for us or it's bad, one way or the other.
I think we can be successful with this plan. Thank you for helping us get to this point.
Any other questions?
I have. Jeanne Dunn, Captain Pierce Road. In the future, ten years from now, and we need to expand, how could you expand building and apartment? Is it possible? Is all the senior centers that have been built, aren't still expanding, Duxbury is expanding, Hanover wants to expand? And I think that's not happening in the future. So how would you expand it? Or where would you expand it? Good question.
I want to answer it.
There's smaller opportunities to expand on these ends. There's, the corridor goes through the middle of the building. There's this area here that is an opportunity. We didn't fill it in now because we were trying to set off the school building, but that's an area to expand. And you, the parking lot can grow in this direction. We didn't do it now. We met with the abutters, and we've been trying to keep that parking lot as far from the fence and keep that parking lot smaller, which is why generated the two lots, because we do have some favors here to not try and overwhelm their property. But this is really the area to grow. In addition, I think I explained in the presentation is that, you know, we're building in some opportunities to change within your footprint, how we know things are going to change in the future.
Are you putting fabric lines out there on first floor?
No.
Probably not.
Any other questions? Well, good.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Janice LeBlanc, James Wang. I'd just like to reiterate what Tony and yourself have said about losing old gates. I also worked there for two years, so. And there are so many problems with it, so using it for anything does not make it much any sense. And sometimes the, sometimes the right decision is the hardest decision.
Thank you. I'm asking if there are any more. I know you've been here for a long time, even though we still have an aggressive agenda, which you're welcome to stay. You're not looking for any motion for us, other than this was just a presentation for us and the board, Greg?
We do have a motion.
We do.
It was, it's.
I believe they're looking for the board to approve the schematic design tonight.
Ah. Yes, I did prepare for this. This was put on the table when I got here at quarter of, so that's my fault. I should have looked at my paperwork. Questions from the board?
Yes.
Yes.
When we, if the board is so inclined to do the motion, can we make sure that we include some of the modifications that were asked for, i.e. to ensure that the elevations are in line? Because the worst thing that I would hate to do is to have to put forward an approval of a plan and not have those things addressed that were brought up today. So with regards to yours and Karen's concern about the elevation and the sort of size and scope and scale of those two buildings, so we actually have a better idea of what we're getting. And then also, I would like to see a detail of those costs that Tony asked for, just to see if there's anything to do to bring down that cost of the rec side. Not that I'm not supportive of it being there, I absolutely am, but I want this to succeed. So if we can add those into the motion.
Joel, does this include the replacement of the glass blocks at this point? Yeah.
Oh, it does.
Which is expensive.
Yeah.
Of the what?
The glass blocks around the top.
So that doesn't have to happen, right?
And don't air condition that, Jim.
If you don't replace the.
Mara doesn't like that.
If you don't replace the glass blocks, we'll be back replacing them at some point.
And you never got.
They don't have to be, but you'd be back to replace.
Okay. Well, if we can just include an itemization to kind of look at that, that's all I'm suggesting.
Okay. If you were to, if the scale became an issue, I would presume that the easiest solution would be to move it further away from, or move, you're direct, where you're looking further away from the gymnasium to be able to do it, which I would think would alter your parking, maybe representation from perpendicular, changing it. So that's something to maybe consider. I don't know. I, you know, you know better than I, but I'm just saying, if you move it easterly, it's going to impact your parking lot.
We had sort of anticipated that.
Okay.
And we would rotate the parking lot and.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's going to accommodate that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, then. So per the conditions or the requests of the board, then can I, I'll entertain a motion, if you want?
Just the schematic, really, not the.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Not the price, really.
Correct.
Okay.
You make the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, sure, if I.
There you go.
I just want to make.
Oh, I got it.
Move to approve the schematic design of the new senior center building and gymnasium building renovations for the Recreation Department as proposed.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking so much time.
Thank you.
Do you need them, Jim, for the next?
I don't need them for this. The next item is the amendment to the architect's contract. As you can tell from the discussion tonight, what Joel's been asked to do has changed about nine, ten times. It keeps, the iterations keep changing, we keep asking him. This contract amendment is in line with what we've been asking to do for those changes. He should be compensated for those.
Okay. Questions from the board?
My only question is, Lorraine, do we have any power cords? We've been here long enough, I'm dead.
I think there's one right behind you.
Okay?
There's one right here.
So Jim, where's, where's the money coming from?
Some of it's coming from the, we have money in the article, and some will come from, Kevin's going to come from facilities.
From facilities?
Yep.
So it's an additional $250,000?
Yes. What's this contract? About nine hundred and change total. Nine hundred and change total with the amendment.
And is that mostly due to the gymnasium addition of it, or?
This amendment, a lot of it is due to the gymnasium, yeah.
Should be hot now.
Now that, other side.
Plus, Tony, we asked to go back and look at, again, reusing the old B wing, reusing the A wing, those are all things that weren't part of the original.
No, but we discussed all that.
I disagree with that.
Yeah, I mean, we discussed that all in our opening things, you know. We were all shocked when it didn't come in with the design that it came in.
I'm with Tony on this, so, you know, I don't, I have no problem compensating them for the additional work for the gym, because I think that was added on. But I personally believe that there was some pretty clear instruction provided in July.
If you look at the contract, I would say it is almost entirely the gym, but there is some other work that we asked them to do.
Okay.
Can we just get a breakdown, Jim, on that?
Yep.
All right. And so why don't we do this? We'll deal with it in our next meeting then, if we get the breakdown.
Yep.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So let me just tell the people here for budgets.
Thank you.
Well, one more?
I know, I know, but for budgets, we're going to take a break after I do the next one. So I'm saying that because we've been doing this for two hours and 10 minutes, so all the department heads and people, just give you a break. Give us, think about being back here in about maybe eight-thirty? Okay? Otherwise, you can sit here and wait. That's okay. Sorry.
Jim, one quick comment on the, just the rationale behind the, the pricing increase was based on the total cost of the project going up, which I get.
Yep.
To some extent. But there's certain components of it, and maybe those were omitted, like the demolition of the building isn't really engineered, right? The three million, is that all part of that? I'm trying to, or is that, is it just the two buildings that it, that that rationale went? You can just find that out.
Yeah. And Steve's still here, so we know what we're looking for. So between Steve and I, we'll get it to you.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right, so.
I'll pay Steve more money.
What's that?
Thanks, Steve.
That's what we like to hear.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going to move on to at eight thirteen, to the 7:05 discussion vote of a generator installation at Sitewitz Town Library. Kevin Kelly, Facilities Director. Kevin, good evening, and thank you for your patience.
Evening.
This is a discussion we had back, I want to say, back in November?
November thirteenth.
Okay. And I, if I'm not mistaken, Tony had some questions, the reason why we got continued. Sean wasn't here for it, but obviously, you know, Sean's back for it. There was a family, I think, situation, any event. And so what do we have before us now, Kevin?
So on the thirteenth, we came before the board to request the release of library, the release of library project funds to the Public Building Commission for generator and security improvements. The request amount was $209,000, $29,575, and the board asked for more backup to support the $190,000 I had requested for the generator. So I said at that time that I would go and get more specifications and budget numbers and more, more information on that. Since then, I have met with four generator companies, and we looked at doing it two ways. One is to do the entire building, full coverage, covering everything, and the other is to just pick up the things we need to do to protect the building in inclement weather and in a power outage. And the basic number to do the entire building, I have three number, three, I would call them hard numbers, one for $210,000, one for $195,000, and another one for $165,000. And then the numbers to do what we'll call the partial coverage, I have two hard numbers, one of $109,000 and one of $115,000. And if I may, I'll talk a little bit about the difference between the two. So to do the entire building is kind of a big project. There's no room in the building to put transfer switches and to do those types of things because of the size of the electrical room is already full of everything. So we would, in essence, I'll try to go quickly, because I know we're, we're busy tonight. We would put the transfer switch outside, near the generator, in between the generator and the transformer, which is there now. We would excavate and break into the existing conduit, which supply the building now, and we would tie in right there. That would, that would mean about a week shutdown of the building, excavation outside, a temporary generator to come in in order to do that. And that's unavoidable, speaking to three different companies to look at doing it three different ways. So to do the whole building is somewhat of an involved process. To do, just pick up partial of the building, we can fit the switch inside, not in the electrical room, we'd have to go in a mechanical room next door to it, do a couple of code-related issues there for fireproofing, but we would be able to put the generator in the same location, outside, then come into the building, dig down trench end, come into the building with the appropriate things, and put the switching inside, and be able to hook up the new panels, tie into the old electric room, or the existing electric, electric room.
What's the difference in price between the 210 and 195?
165.
Oh, I thought it was 195 and 165.
I have 210, 195, and 165.
So what's the difference between?
So the 210 is everything. That includes, the actual, the 210, that's all the digging, that's anticipating that the conduits are encased in concrete. That includes a thousand, a thousand gallon diesel tank on the property to run it, as opposed to, the 165 does not include a tank, it's just the tank that comes with the generator itself, which is, I think, around 48 hours runtime. So you would have to fill it, you know, if you had an extended outage, you would have to continue to fill it.
Not a big deal.
Tommy?
Not a big deal.
No.
We know people.
And the 195, what's the 195 differential between the 210 and the 165?
The 19, the 165 did not carry a lot of the excavation fees, and it was even discussion of us doing some of the excavation for the project.
Okay. But the, but the 195, I was just trying to figure out, what's that, how does that, is it just cheaper than the 210?
Yes.
Or is it, but it does cover it all?
A lot of it is, it, the 19, the 210 includes the tank, it concluded some engineering fees that the one, the 210 included the 10,000, the 1,000 gallon tank, engineering fees, and, um, something else with the generator, the tie-in for the generator. Where's the 195? It's just two different companies. The biggest, the, the only thing I think that the 195 didn't have is the tank.
And the tank for 1,000 gallons, how long would that last to, you know, if it's operating?
Full operation, I think about eight or nine days. You have to do the math, but.
So let me ask you this, with the tank for eight or nine days, and we have, like, the past year, we lost electricity for maybe two days, maybe three. At some point, do they have, don't you have to replace the gas and, and then recycle it if you don't use it for, you know, if it's full 1,000 gallons? I guess maybe you wouldn't put 1,000 in, or would you?
They run periodically, so just for that reason, because the shelf life of petroleum products is not like it used to be, so they run periodically, so you would have to refill it once a year. The treatment plant down on Driftway has a diesel generator backup, and when we lost power, that, you know, that had to kick in.
Here's another question I have with that, and my in-laws have a generator, and that's what goes on and off, and you mentioned that, oh geez, they've had it now for about 10, maybe 12 years, and they have to replace it. And I was like, you just built this new home and put a generator in, apparently, it's the useful life. Is that something that we're going to be running into?
No, this is a commercial grade generator, a, an air-cooled residential generator would not have the same life expectancy of a generate, like, the, the one here in Town Hall is, I think, 28 years old, and I've got a capital plan down, down the road to change it, but it still works pretty well.
Okay. Questions?
I just really want to know the difference between partial and full. You know, if we went to the partial option, what does that power up?
Heat, emergency lights.
Partial would pick up selected lighting circuits, fire alarm system, air handling units, boilers, um, air handling units, cabinet unit heaters, heat tracing systems, sewer pumps, ejector pumps, fire pump controller, and jockey pump.
So that's more protecting the building, whereas a full, we could use as a warming station?
Building could be open, yes.
And be open. Okay, that's kind of what I was looking for.
That's the difference, yes.
Okay.
The partial one is 100 KW, the big one is 250 KW.
Right.
That's a big difference, too, yeah.
Karen, Tony?
What, Kevin, what do you recommend? Do you have a preference for, it sounds like doing the whole building is, could be opening a can of worms?
It's not opening a can of worms, I mean, it's, it's a big project. It's, it's, it's more involved. Um, I don't know if people are going to like a 1,000 gallon diesel tank sitting out outside on the property.
Yeah, where would it be located?
And it, the generator would go on the, I think it's the west side, in between Central Park Housing and the, uh.
Backside of the.
Over by the fireplace, if you were in the building, in that corner. We wouldn't close it all in and put a fence in and so forth, but right now, you look out, that's a big greenscape, and part of that would be gone.
Okay.
Tony?
Yeah, I, I mean, you, you looked into it further, I talked to a couple electricians, they thought the price was outrageous, I think the process is outrageous, but I, I think I do, um, just about everything we do in this town, so, um, I, I mean, that's the process, right? We tell them how much money we have, and we were surprised that the bids come in at that number, so, um, so I, I think if I were to vote, I would vote on the 165 and do the whole thing, as opposed to the 100 or 110 and, and do the partial. Although, you know, if the weather's that bad out, are people going to be going to the library, are employees going to be able to get to the library that don't necessarily live in this town? And as John mentioned, really doesn't happen that often, and if it does, it's usually for a, a day or two.
Which would be the 165 number, right?
Yeah.
Does that one go for two days, gas-wise?
Yeah, but Sean can get over there with an oil truck.
But the 165 was the low end in some, more of the incomplete core of the whole thing. If we do the whole building, it's going to be more between my original estimate of $190 to $200,000 if we do the complete building.
Okay.
See, now I'm more inclined to protect the building.
You are protecting it with 100,000.
No, I know, no, no, well, that's what I mean, the partial.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, I'm more inclined to look at.
It's just a little, just, Kevin, we had tanks, then we gave them away, you know, over at the schools, you know, that would have worked, you know, and it's not, I'm not blaming you or anything, this is, this is after, so it's just, you know, it's unfortunate.
We can't put a thousand, a 1,000 gallon tank out in the front yard of the library.
That's another thing, that's another issue there.
And we can look at doing natural, natural gas, that's, that's an option. I don't have the information yet if the gas line would support it.
Talk to me about that.
But we could do it.
Could you look at that?
Yes, I'm looking into it now. I just don't have the information.
I'm, I'm inclined to say, power the whole building, because in time, it may be a warming station, it may be something, and the way that, you know, libraries are evolving, may not just be a library, it may be some other center the town's going to need, and it'd be nice to have a generator that's going to fund it or, or heat it, but if it's not oil, uh, sorry, Sean, probably with gas, and then I'm like, maybe that would, without the aesthetics and impacting the, the view, then maybe that would be less intrusive. I'd like to know what the cost is.
Yep.
So why don't we do this? How much time do you think you need, would you be able to do it between our next meeting or, because I'll put you on the top of the agenda, because this is your third meeting coming to us.
The other thing is, can I just jump in?
Sure.
I mean, if we decide tonight, so when would you get the bid and all that? I mean, they'd be working in February, and they could be three feet of snow and even in March, so, you know, this will, likelihood happen, spring, summer?
Yeah, generators to this side, I'm being told, this size are running four to six months out.
Oh, all right.
They still have, they have to go back to the building committee to get the whole thing blessed, this is just to release the funds for it, they have to go back to the building committee to go through the whole process with them.
And I also think we should get a little more engineering fees, engineering involved in it a little also, just because it is very, very involved.
So that's a good point. I mean, I think we're being asked to release the funds, it, we're not for, for a generator, which I think we're all inclined to do, a generator at some point, and also for the security enhancements is also part of this conversation.
Yes.
Yeah, about 19 grand.
Yeah.
I mean, we could.
If it voted, the board feels comfortable, it depends on what the board would like to do.
And then come back and, and decide on, and recommend which system?
Well, I think what we're doing is, if we're voting, you're voting a number, I think that's what originally, Kevin, you were asking for.
Yeah.
And then they'd go to the, um, public building, and then they would take it from there. So I think that's the question, where does the board stand on this? Do you want further information about anything else or not?
It would have been, the gas would be cheap, wouldn't it, Kevin, because you wouldn't have to have the tank?
You wouldn't have to have the tank, the install would change a little because of the excavation, and hopefully, we wouldn't need to increase the size of the gas line, but I, getting that information from the gas company's been difficult right now.
They're busy.
Yeah.
So think about that.
A little bit of backlog. I mean, I just, if we're going to do it, I, I would just recommend the board do the whole building generator, you know, just anecdotally, everybody know they'll put a generator in their house, a couple years later, said, I should have paid the extra X amount and done the whole house, because I didn't do this circuit, I did that circuit, I didn't run the air conditioner, I didn't do the stove, whatever. We don't know where we're going to be, we don't know what's going to happen. As John said, the building use can evolve, it just gives us a building that we know in a pinch is going to be open, it's a place that we can use for whatever we have to use in any type of, you know, event or emergency, but that's, I just think we'll come back later and say, ah, we should have spent the extra money.
How's the board feel?
Do you mind, Kevin, back one more time, right in the beginning of the, would you mind coming back?
No, I don't know if I can get the information that quickly, but I'll do what I can. On the gas, you want the difference on the gas?
Yeah.
Not necessarily, but some other details.
All right, so why don't we do this then? Lorraine, the next, Kevin, if you get back to Lorraine, the next meeting, whatever meeting it is for you, our next meeting or the one subsequent to that one?
I'll get it by the next meeting, that'd be great.
And if, you're, you're first out?
Yeah.
Right after the administrator's report, okay?
You can go ahead of me if you want, Kev. You can go ahead of me, too, if you want.
No, it's fine, it is what it is.
And I'll tell you what, you're here tonight if you want, you can do the facilities if you want, if not, you can, I'll give you the option, you can go home tonight and we can catch you.
I'm here, well.
I'll put you first next week if you want, it's up to you for next time, all right. All right, I'll tell you what we're going to do, then we're going to take a break right now, and you're going to be the first one up, okay?
Sorry.
How's that? All right. Um, five, folks, we're going to just take a 10-minute break, and then we'll get right back together again, reconvene, all right? And so our first budget review item is the Situate Community Television. For my board, it's $159. Seth, good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry about the wait, but appreciate your patience.
Not a problem at all. I will, always excited to be here.
Uh, let, let's do this.
Yeah.
I'd love to have you go through great detail, but can you pick one or two things that you want to highlight to the board, and more, more importantly, to the TV land?
Yes.
And then we'll get straight to your budget, how about that?
Absolutely. Yeah, you know, we can do this fast. Again, excited to be here, but I will, I'll make this quick. If you look at our budget, it looks very similar to last year, here's the deal with that, we don't need a lot of stuff, we need content, we are certainly well on our way. As a gentle reminder, if you're not familiar, SCTV is three channels, channel eight, which is our public one, channel nine, which is government, channel 22, which is educational. If you go to any of these channels, and I encourage everyone to, I, it has a slew of content, unbelievable amount of content, so make sure you check that out. In addition to that, we've added new technology where there is scrolling information the entire time, everything from national news, political news, local news, local weather, local traffic, goes all the way, I'm telling you, if you go there, we look legit, I mean, you will stop, you actually watch it, which is nice. With that said, we, we certainly have some challenges, mainly visibility, I'm pretty convinced that there are not a lot of people watching, so we do need to change that. We, it, it really comes down to like scheduling, last, last time I was here, I talked a little bit about how we wanted to get on Comcast, you know, when you push the program guide, we wanted to get on that, as it turned out, PEG Media, we call it PEG Media, which is Public Educational and Government Media, all the communities, they have one, they tried to band together to go up against Comcast and say, we need to have this ability, went to the state level, the state shot it down, so that's not an option. So what we use now, we have the website, we use social media, it's fine, you know, I mean, but I think to ask people to have to go there first and then go to the TV, it's, it's a struggle, so that's something we've got to work on. Also, we have compatibility issues, we're dealing with a lot of technology from different years, look at this room in general, we're having issues with our live signal right now, we have equipment in the back that's 10 years old, that's going through a fiber line, that's about a year old, to equipment in our studio that is probably two to three years old, and software there that's like five years old, trying to make all that work, I mean, better way to look at it, it's sort of like, if we have film, we have real film, we have VHS, we have a DVD, then we have a, a media file, let's try to make all those work together. You know, it's, it's extremely difficult, extremely time-consuming, it requires a lot of additional equipment, that's a huge issue for us. And then, what else? We, just things with staffing, Neil did build a, a bigger staff, I've got a great crew, now, one of which is filming right now, that's Andrew Connolly back there, by the way, he's an aspiring filmmaker, he just released his, uh, film on his YouTube channel, it's called Jump the Gun. What's your YouTube channel called, Andrew?
The Quelk Man.
The Quelk Man.
The what man?
The Quelk Man. The Q-U-A-L-K-M-A-N. Go check it out. Uh, yes, so frankly, that's, that's what I have for you.
Good. I could, um, there is some kind of link for watching activities, sporting activities in gymnasium, is that through you folks?
That is not. So that is through the high school, they have worked with a private company, and what you do is you have to get a, a subscription to their website, and then you can access sporting events live.
I was just curious whether or not that's something that we could consider or aspire to, that way you don't necessarily, you could put one in here without having to have somebody here to do it, but you could do it from a central stand.
It is, it's certainly worth looking into, the catch with those is, it's, again, it's a subscription, so you pay.
So we can own it and do it, you have to go through?
Right, I mean, there, there could be a company out there that I could certainly try to investigate.
I was just curious, to see, that would be helpful to you.
I'll say this to you, one of the things I'm looking at is, as we well know, Situate loves its Facebook, and you can do a lot of live elements through Facebook, so that is something we're investigating now, which I actually would like to do. And frankly, the majority of the time, we get requests for any, any meeting of any sort or any event, it's through YouTube, you know, and they want to be able to see that, and we can sometimes put things on Facebook. And when we have tried to do meetings in the past through our Facebook, we've tried to do town hall, town meetings, granted, they were sort of epic fails, but we did get a lot of people tuning in to watch them, so.
Well, let's look at your budget, basically, your department requested $266,991. Town administrators in agreement with you and concurs. The budget for FY19 was $259,501. And as of fiscal eighteen, the actual amount was $156,745. And it's pretty much your level funded.
Correct.
That's it. Questions from the board?
Just one quick comment. I know you probably are aware of this, the library, one of their key things for this year is to do civic engagement and civic programming.
Correct.
So I would encourage you to work with Jesse Finney to make sure that those efforts are not, are dovetailed with programming.
Absolutely.
I just wanna just say thank you for yours and the cable committee's negotiation with Comcast. I think you secured a good new contract.
I should, yeah, briefly on that, I didn't mention that, yeah, I know you've been presented with that, but I don't want the importance of this to be lost. This is, this was a huge get for us. If you're not familiar, so Comcast is not necessarily doing these, in fact, they're nixing them for a lot of towns and communities because it's not worth their time. So it definitely took a village to put that, the presentation was great, they looked at our channels, they really liked what we were putting on air. More importantly, they looked at the amount of Comcast customers. So we have to give a huge shout out to all the Situate residents who are Comcast customers.
It's no choice.
And again, well, this is true.
Thank you anyway.
You got it, you got it. So there you go.
Seth, thank you.
Thank you very much, good to see you guys.
Kevin? Now, that is 4:40 for my board.
It's 4:10, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, 4:10, what did I do? I was gonna say it was my eyes. Kevin, tell you what, two things, how about what your thoughts are, what you're looking for, and then we'll get right to your budget, how's that?
Great, so as Seth mentioned, I mean, it's pretty much level funding. I guess, probably the best thing to talk about is our biggest challenges that we try to face. We try every year to do more and more preventive maintenance. We struggle with that, just because of, you know, what we are, how many we are, and what we're up against to do. We still do a lot of reactionary things, just going and dealing with problems that come up every day, but we're trying to find ways to do that better and do that differently. And our biggest challenge is dealing with the new buildings. They're great, they're wonderful, but we're working hard to protect the investment. And it costs a lot of money to operate new buildings. There's a lot more operating things, there's a lot more service contracts, a lot more fees associated, a lot more electronics. And we're trying to find things within the budget to set the tone, so as we move down the road, we can do more and more preventive maintenance, service contracts, and so forth. The things that we've, we're doing ourselves and on the tail end of the warranty, been happening on its own.
Well, let's get to your numbers.
Our bottom line, I think, is $21,000 more than what we requested last year. And we'll go through the whole thing, a lot of that is to help operate gates.
So there was the...
New gates, right?
Old gates.
Old gates.
Old gates.
You requested $1,111,78. Town administrator, it's recommended of $1,028,678. Your budget last year was $1,7622, so, yeah, it's, it is... And then the actual from FY18 was $915,703. But there were a lot of things that had been changed from various departments, put into your budget, which is why it went up last year significantly compared to the year before. That is the fiscal year. Questions from the board?
Speaking of old gates, the natural gas.
Yeah.
It's a big number.
Yeah, what, why?
So, running the building last year, was the year got colder, we had a lot of problems. The infrastructure was not as well equipped as we thought it was, so that we could operate the building at a reduced temperature. There were, it was like Building C was the only building we were able to run at like forty-five, fifty degrees. The rest of it, we were, you know, every night, we checked, every day, we checked the temperature and have to go adjust things manually and so forth. But because of the makeup of the building, the infrastructure of the building, the heating system itself, the controls, we were running the building a lot of times as if it was occupied, just to keep parts of the building protected.
Is there any need to keep it, this section?
Yeah, so we've already spent money since the last heating season to improve some controls and change out some valves, so that we can better control the spots of the building that are not occupied. But when it gets extreme cold, just the building being the building, the spots of the building just don't get heat. We have to turn it up in order to heat the building.
But I think Sean's point is, last year, it was only $13,000, and this year it's sixty. It's, first page, about two thirds of the way down.
Well, the actual is sixty-three.
Well, that was from FY19 though, eighteen, right?
It's the budget versus spend.
Alright, now you're going up, I see, from thirteen to sixty.
Thirteen that they spent, sixty plus.
The budget was nineteen.
Sixty-three thousand dollars last year.
But the budget for last year was thirteen, right?
Thirteen.
Budget for this year is thirteen-eight.
Right.
So, and last year they spent sixty-three. I was just checking to see what, how much we've spent year to date in there.
That's what I was gonna say, are we just trending that much higher, that you're going back to the sixty thousand?
Year to date, we've spent fourteen-eight-eighty-two, so we're over budget for the old gates gas so far.
Right, but the budget was thirteen thousand last year and sixty thousand.
Thirteen thousand eight hundred for this year.
Right.
The budget for fiscal eighteen's not on there.
Right.
Right, my point is, the budget, the last budget we did before this one, it was thirteen thousand dollars, right?
No, there was no budget for old gates in fiscal eighteen, we had no idea it wasn't budgeted, because we hadn't taken it over.
No, he means full year of nineteen, Nancy.
The full year of nineteen's budget is thirteen-eight.
We're at fourteen-eight right now.
We're over already.
By a thousand.
But that was because we were still trying to estimate where the money had to go for, between all these different accounts, a lot of the different electricity and gas. So we knew some would go over and some would be under.
So do you...
Old gates is just a wild card.
So, the actual of 2018, FY18 was sixty-three thousand.
Correct.
And so, are you anticipating that while it's going to be more than thirteen thousand eight hundred, which is the current fiscal year, you're not anticipating it's gonna be sixty thousand? Although I know that's what you're, that's what you're banking on, or that's what you're budgeting for this FY20.
We're doing our best to get it under sixty, by making changes, but we're also, with the original number for the thirteen, you know, we worked hard to try to get that number by looking what the school used, what the school did, and only using one boiler and those types of things. But we're also using the gymnasium and building A more than we originally anticipated. You know, that's an operation.
Yeah, three boilers.
No, only one now.
Alright.
Only one boiler for the whole building, the whole complex.
Oh, really? There were three. Did you replace one of them at that time, or did you replace one and then just...
I was able to secure green community funding to, all three were failing. Two of them were dead, and the last one was just limping along.
Right.
So we replaced one. And did the figures that we could do in the entire complex, except one, because we're not running at a hundred percent occupancy. But we did spend a lot more than we anticipated.
Alright.
As an example, for Kevin, the last gasco we paid was thirty-eight hundred dollars, the one prior to that was seven-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. Just returning on the heating system, getting it going. Plus, we also had bills that we were not expecting from Spark Energy. So, the school department had an agreement between the distribution and the supply. And Spark is their, the company they have an agreement with, we have an agreement with Direct Energy, and we weren't getting those bills, neither were they. They just kinda disappeared off the map, and all of a sudden, they showed up. We got over seven thousand dollars worth of Spark Energy bills in the last two months.
When we first turned on the heat, Maricely, Maric can attest that, you know, we, the gym was like eighty degrees the first week of September, because we had valves blowing by. It was hard to find parts, it's hard to do things, it's just been a challenge. But we've got that stuff under control now.
Question?
I do, John, I have a question for Nancy. So, this is a lot more granular than we usually see, you've got everything broken down. So my question for you is, as far as, you know, when you get to year end now, and then any transfer of funds from one line to the other, are we just looking at the 141,0520? Or do you have to get town approval to move, town meeting approval to move in between these sub-lines?
Not between the sub-lines, we'll stay within the org, so that the schedules...
The org, that was my question.
Because that's how town meeting votes it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? Kevin, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to the next one, which happens to be the Information Technology, that's 155. Phil, how are ya?
Good, how you doing?
Good?
Hi, Phil.
Just quickly, are there any, anything right now that you wanna at least share, two things?
As you know, I'm tasked with providing the confidentiality integrity and availability of all our systems, PCs, networks, public safety, fire, you know, and town hall. Financial systems, payroll, now we're in, payroll's in-house, and utility billing, I believe is that.
Motive was a lot of money.
Yeah, and so, it's quite a bit of very important things we need to keep available. So, my budget sort of ties into all of that. And just more focus on security and training for the employees that... Yeah, that's about it. It took a lot of items that were sort of decentralized and put them in my budget, so they would've been, in the past years, hopefully, paid out of other accounts. But I can't, kind of took the, the idea that you can't really have security sort of subject to prioritization between something else. So, it's a priority to me, and if I'm gonna be responsible for keeping everything secure, then I need to make sure that all the maintenance and everything on our devices comes out of my budget and is secure. So, you'll see there's an increase over last year. And if I, I have a, if I didn't take the centralized items, the budget would be 157, 237. But since I centralized several items, and also, we had one large hit, our core infrastructure, that runs everything. When we procured it three years ago, we bought three years of maintenance with it. Fiscal year, we'll have to re-up the maintenance, so that's twenty-six thousand dollars. And that runs, that's...
Is that hitting the purchase of services line?
Is that technical services?
That is in information technology, technical services.
Yep.
Okay.
That was my one question, okay?
So, right now, you're requesting $425,377. Town administrator has recommended $409,400. It's up from last year, where you had $370,874. And other than that, that's it? Any other questions from the board?
I'm really excited about the online permitting that's on, that's what I'm...
Oh, yeah.
That'll be a huge...
With Brad's help and the department heads, we really hope to get that spread across all the departments.
Yeah, streamline that, and that's gonna be so helpful, especially with the permitting. And I assume internally, you'll know whether or not you've gotten the COMCOM, or whether you got the Board of Health, or the building, you know, permit, I mean, that's gonna be extremely helpful.
And trace a path back and everything like that, it's very, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if your goals are in any order priority, but I'd bump that one right up.
Do you wish to go back?
I'm there to facilitate on that particular project, because I'm not a department head for those proj, departments, and I'm, I'm, I've got my pom-poms out, I'm ready, I can't do this.
Where's Kevin, did we hear, did you hear that, Jim?
Sorry?
He's ready.
He's got pom-poms, no, I'm sorry.
He's ready to get the online permitting up and going, so.
I'm excited for the online permitting.
In terms of your department, the security features, the data processing and all that, you feel comfortable with all the, the systems running securely, backed up efficiently?
We have, our system's a state of the art. And as long as we keep up with the maintenance and the training, and the new developments in technologies and cybersecurity and threats, we should be good.
Great, good job.
Bill is also a new resident of town.
That's true, yeah.
Welcome.
So we can tell everybody to bug you at the grocery store, or wherever you are, the Little League fields, or the soccer fields.
Bitch Shaw's just over the border.
Quick question, Bill, how long have you been with us now?
Eight years.
Eight years. And I mention that because you came in, we had nobody. And you were just to get the Apple computer, and this computer, and that computer, and link everything.
Yeah, it's interesting.
People really knew what the town was like.
Now we're state of the art.
And now, as you just said, that's what I'm like, you're sitting here, I'm like amazed.
We were ducked.
Give you a tour, anytime you wanna see the technology.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill, thanks for staying.
Welcome being to town. Alright, let's move on to the next, which happens to be recreation, that's 630. Well, I think we know what your priority is from the last meeting we had, when you're here for Fields, that's coming up. That's very big, obviously, what's going on with the Gates Middle School, now that you're in there, strike that. With the vet gymnasium and being there, and making sure that that is gonna be home, that's gonna be long-term, it's home, and making sure it works. So why don't we just jump, jump to your budget, how's that sound?
That's great. There's just one thing that I'd like to say, every year we, and this is a forum that I can probably do this. Every year, we award the Mr. C Award, and I have a chance to do that now in public and on TV, and it's really nice for me to do this. This year, where we've awarded Ed Gibbons from the Police Department. He has, for probably almost approximately ten years, run our boat safety class for free. And so we could offer it to the people in Situate for free. And it was even the fall and the spring, and he fits the criteria, never take, never took, take a penny, never did anything, was always easy, didn't... Just talked to him the other day, and he says he's ready to do it again if he had to, but he's great. And we just wanna say thank you to him, and he's gonna get an award.
Well, it's great.
Good guy.
You don't get a lot of money with it, that's for sure.
Congratulations.
Good guy.
It's an honor, it's our honor that we give him and to recognize him. And thank you for letting me say that.
Good choice. One question.
Yes.
Why is there no part-time budget?
Let's move to the revolving fund.
The what revolving?
To the where?
The Situate revolving.
The Recreation Revolving Fund.
Recreation Revolving Fund.
Part-time salary's not full.
So, they're gonna be paid out of the fees?
They're gonna be paid out of the fees, yep.
Wouldn't they always pay out of the fees?
No.
What happened with these? They went to...
Fees paid for all the counselors and all the other office workers, but it didn't pay for that one part-timer. The general fund was supporting that part-timer as well as the two full-timers.
So now, do we have excess fees, and they just went to free cash, and now they're not gonna go to free cash?
The fees stay with the revolving fund as long as they're within limits? So, Morick has sufficient fees to support Sarah.
She can support that, yeah. By the statute, you can't take full-time salaries out of the fund, that has to come out of the town's money. But you can take part-time salaries, so that was shifted.
So what happened last year? We just had an accrual of the funds, just had funds in it that we didn't use?
Yes, we have those in the Recreation Revolving Fund that weren't used, that they were allowed to carry over as long as they have specified what they're for and to run their summer programs. But it's certainly a discussion, and we may wanna have it at a future date, if the current revolving fund statute is the appropriate revolving fund statute for Situate Recreation. There's at least three options, and we're on the oldest option, the first one that ever became in existence for Recreation Revolving, which is the fifty-three D.
Okay, so we've, how much money's in that fund?
There's close to four hundred thousand dollars in that fund at the close of the year, but that also included all the money to cover the summer programs. And then she has funds set aside for a study of north, the central...
Southfield.
The south, Centralfield?
South, yeah. We did the north already.
New equipment, and for some work at Old Gates for, for her outfitting, not for the construction or anything, but just for her outfitting.
Right, and that's not the money for the track? That was a article?
There's a piece in her, that she has set aside in her budget for the concussion pad at the track. Because when they originally went to do the track, they didn't have sufficient funds for the concussion pad, so she has funds set aside for that.
That's not part of that 450?
It is part of that. It's not part of the 450 for the project, it is part of her...
The budget.
Not her, her revolving fund.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't cut it.
What?
We didn't cut it, we just moved it.
Yeah, we're comfortable with it. We believe we can support it.
Okay.
And is it the field revolving fund, or the program revolving fund?
There's, it's one revolving fund under the statute, field is a sub of the revolving fund.
Oh, okay.
And that's why we should probably have a further discussion on that, because you, especially if something moves forward with fields, you're going to wanna spin that off on its own. Now, the current statute, it has to stay with the revol, the other revolving fund.
Alright, your budget, you're looking for $166,454. Town administrators recommended $145,688. Difference of about twenty, a little more than twenty thousand dollars, almost twenty-one. A year ago, you, this budget's $157,627. So is that the difference, because it's going down because of the part-time?
Yeah, so they essentially took an expense and they're just paying it out of the revolving fund instead of the budget.
Questions from the board? Oh, I'm sorry.
As long as you get all the part-time that you need, then...
Yeah, I appreciate that, I believe we can, yes. Yeah, I had a discussion with Jim and Nancy, and we, you know...
We'll flip it back in...
If we ever need their help, we can go back to them.
Six years.
Well, Nancy, so we gotta look at the enabling statute that we use for recreation, because it's, it's the oldest one.
That's something we should take a look at, probably after April, town meeting did determine where we stand.
It's not on fire, and it would require a town meeting to change it anyways.
Okay, so, fall.
Well, the small challenges are, we haven't been able to spend a lot, because we've been kind of up in the air where we've been.
Homeless.
Got that right.
Not anymore, not anymore.
No, no, and thank you for supporting us, yes, the new project.
Karen?
Quick questions, just on the budget for beach sticker sales.
Okay.
Project, we've adjusted it to $240,000, which is below, three hundred, thirty thousand dollars less than actual, it's below the trend, so I just wondered why, is that just being conservative?
I'm sorry, could you say where you were?
The estimated beach sticker sales is below the trend over the last few years of actuals? Is that just being conservative, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just being conservative.
And the other question was, I know the Beach Commission has had a bunch, and you're gonna be talking with them, it's in your goal, but they've had some requests for a little bit of funds to do small projects. And I didn't know if that was anticipated, I mean, I know it's not a lot of money, but if you are in...
Yeah, I'm in constant contact with them already. Today, I was talking to them in my office, I talked to them almost on a monthly basis, just to get an idea, because they are, they are a valuable commission that meets on a regular basis. They're meeting tonight, and I was supposed to go, but this was more important. I told them that there is funds in there, that we, you know, just give me some estimates on what you wanna do, and let's look at it and work together. We put together the beach mats last year, they're looking for shade structures, a couple of other things. Maybe equipment to blow off the beach mats that were put in last year, so we have funds for them. They were talking about a flag system too, but we need to iron that out a little better.
Okay, great, I just wanna make sure it's on the right app.
Yeah, it is.
They're looking for coverage, I'm, did I show you, Jim, the one on, in Quincy, you know, the, what's it called? When you're going down, driving down Quincy...
Sure drive, Walson Beach.
Walson Beach, I took some pictures of like shelters, not shelters, but just like shade areas that they built.
Just a concrete with a...
They look really nice, like, and I'm thinking, that would be something that they should consider potentially. I'm not sure with COMCOM, how you could get them, maybe, but I'm like, it's something to consider, branding it in that this goes all over the beaches, wherever they are, and this question, where do you get the money?
Actually, and something that is removable, like, it will stay up from Memorial Day... They have some nice ideas actually, and something that is removable, like it will stay up from Memorial Day to a little after Labor Day, because anything down there after that's gonna blow away.
And we need storage though, for them.
To put them, well, they, they're canvas.
But I'm saying you have to take them down, put them somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
Since we're tearing Gates down, then, um, any other questions? Want to?
No.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Beautification, six fifty. Donna, sorry to keep you so late here.
Fine, it's very interesting.
All I can say right up front is, your committee deserves more money, I keep saying that every year, more flowers, more beautification in the town, and if we can, we'll get you more money, because you guys do a great job.
Well, I appreciate your support and our volunteers appreciate your support and we are really proud of our dedicated volunteers, of course, we couldn't do it without them. And so, we still have, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five, um, adopt-a-lots, we still support the merchants. And, uh, we would like to try to support the DPW, we're working together with DPW, building grounds to do a little more around Town Hall, to kind of get things, a little more manageable for them, we have, uh, some plans to, um, improve the front entrance and so on, so we, you know, we hope we will be able to get to that this year. We asked for level funding, which Jim approved, thank you very much.
One thing I, not to put more, uh, work on your, um, table here, but, um, obviously with the Golf Committee being put together and kind of curbside appeal, if there were time for any member of your, uh, commission, um, would participate, it would be nice, because we had a woman here two weeks ago, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, Terry Nielsen, who said that she was one of the, may have been one of the original founders of the Beautification Commission, but in any event, she's done a lot of flowers and different things and she suggested that, and I thought to myself, what better to have your, uh, committee, um, give input? Because you, they all do a superb job and you know how to coordinate and put flowerings and plantings together to make them look nice. And that could be a value to the Golf Committee when they're looking at it in the future for curbside appeal, but.
We're happy to help out, I have, in the past, I consulted, consulted with them, um, but they didn't have any money to go forward.
They've got money now, so, just a little FYI.
Yeah, we're happy to support them in any way we can, so, somebody on the commission, I'm sure, would be glad.
Just maybe pairing, that would be neat to see if it worked, but.
We have a couple of members who are very interested in that area of, uh, the development going on there and, and the appearance, streetscapes.
Great.
Sort of idea, so, yes, I'm sure we would be interested.
Good. Questions from the board?
Just thank you, Donna.
Yes, thank you.
And tell the members, we all thank them all, I mean, we don't get to see them, in fact, I'd love to bring them in and say thank you, they'll probably say, don't waste my time, but, we do appreciate it.
It's a little hard to get them all together, we have trouble.
Yeah, you do have trouble. But she tries.
But we do try.
Tries very hard. Especially last year, I think you really kicked up your efforts to try to get folks together, so, she does.
And I like the Christmas theme also on a couple of the islands, always nice to share.
Karen?
One thing I noticed that you, one of your challenges obviously is to keep the pool of volunteers.
Yes.
Have we ever, um, been able to put, um, an opportunity, like a volunteer opportunity on the website for the town? It's pretty visible, or is there ever a time of the year that it'd be good to do like a little recruitment drive?
Or Facebook.
We do that every year. In the spring, okay, I thought that was done, I just wondered when it was done.
In the spring.
In the spring?
Well, you do it for commission members, but we don't really do it for, like, volunteer, like, beautification's a little bit different, right? So she has her members that are official, but then I think what Karen's talking about is giving her kind of a boost and lift to get more volunteers in, right?
Right, exactly, just, you know, I think there are a lot of people in the community, if they knew that, you know, you were looking for hands to be raised to help with Adopt-A-Lot, they might not be as aware that there's that opportunity to serve the community.
I think that's a great idea, we, there used to be a volunteer night, um, we had that a couple of times with, Tricia organized that, that wasn't very productive.
Lauren did. Lauren did, yeah.
Of course.
Will they volunteer for one weekend or something, or one night, did you say?
No, just to. No, to sign up.
To the sign up.
There were only like fifteen people there.
You had one good.
Three years in a row.
Yes.
Thank you, Lauren.
Let's, let's put it on our Facebook page.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Donna, thank you very much.
Donna, thank you, hi to Al.
I'll do that.
Seven days to shipshape day, right?
Dave, you're, you're next.
Come in and tell, remind us about that.
I'll do that.
Oh, do we have a date already? April twenty-seventh? All right, good. David, just if you give us maybe two challenges or two things that the society's looking at that, you know, this year is important, it'd be great, because.
Good evening.
Hi, Dave.
One of the things that we're working on now is getting the Bates House ready for the next tenant, I, as you may know, Vaughn Toomey passed away in September. We have to replace the heating system in the house, there's some electrical work that has to be done, there's painting that has to be done, and some carpentry. That's one of the, that's one of the things that we're working on actively.
Is there any consideration, Dave, on that, I mean, because of its proximity downtown with the Lighthouse to, a tenant is great, because I realize it generates revenue, but to using it more of a museum for the Bates and, just thinking because of it's in the cultural district, to open it up and try to bring it back as an all.
What's interesting, we, we have selected the next tenant and it's actually a third cousin of Vaughn Toomey, so she's connected to that family. And we do open the house five times a year, uh, when we open everything else up, but I'm hoping that we can also include that as a venue for a lot of the school field trips. And this is an individual that'd be more than willing to hold, uh, other, other visits and trips to the house upon request. Yeah, I think you're right, it's, it's certainly a, a, a very visible site and a fascinating site, it's a very old house, it was built in sixteen eighty, sixteen sixty-five. So, that's one of the things that we're very involved in right now.
I was thinking like if there's some way of like trying to, I'm not sure what it was like in eighteen twelve, but certainly, you know, seventeenth century home, bringing back some of the old, but, obviously, so that when people see it, they'll, there's more historical, significant, not significance, but elements to it, as a part of the trail going out to the Lighthouse and, it just, just to me, it just seems like because it is a unique, the history of that house with the Bates, uh, daughters and girls.
Yeah, we are, we are thinking about that actually.
Anyway, all right, sorry, I interrupted you.
Yeah, sure, um, the society is what we're saying, seven historical, uh, buildings that are owned by the town of Situate, I'll just read them off quickly. Cudworth House, Situate Lighthouse, the Mann House, the Massachusetts Humane Society Boathouse at Situate Marine Park, Lawson Tower, and Lawson Gates and the Bates House, so there's seven of them. Our budget request this year was nineteen thousand, one hundred dollars, that's up eleven hundred dollars from last year, and that was approved by the Town Administrator, so we, we appreciate that. And if you think of it this way, um, take the nineteen thousand, one hundred and divide it by the seven sites, that comes out to about twenty-seven hundred dollars per building. I think you're getting a lot of value for the money, the money spent. These buildings have to be painted, there's constant carpenter work that has to be done, there's alarm systems that have to be, uh, kept in, in place, they have to be monitored. At Lawson Tower, we have to have the bells inspected at least once a year, so there's a lot of things going into this. So, I think it's a pretty good deal, twenty-seven hundred bucks per, per building.
I think it is too, I think we all do for, for that amount, Dave, that's good.
I don't know what else you need me to say or want me to get into, but.
Anybody? Nope.
No, just thank you, yeah.
All right.
I was at, I just want to share, I was at a, um, a gathering a little less than a month ago at the Daniel Webster House, first time I'd been there. Very nice, and I was chatting with, um, um, one of the caretakers or curators there, and, um, she talks so highly of the society and, you know, the fact that the town of Situate has all these buildings for the people and, you know.
There's no other town that has any of those.
It's amazing, it really isn't, it, you're right, it's amazing.
The seven town-owned buildings, we have six that we own outright ourselves, we have to deal with.
Yep.
There is an organization called Backroads of the South Shore that, uh, several of our members are involved in, and when you mentioned, uh, Marshfield, they're also involved, pretty much every town on the South Shore is involved in this, and it's always a way of collaborating, ways to think about innovative ways to present these buildings and, you know, preserve the history and all that.
Yeah.
Lot going on.
Well, David, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it to the members, thank you. Moving on to Waterways, which is number sixty-six, which I think is in the bag.
Actually, it's.
Enterprise fund. Good evening.
How are you?
We're good, Steve. There we go. Same thing, is there any two goals that, you know, I say two, I mean, you could have more, but I'm like, just quickly highlight that you think are important for this coming, uh, fiscal year, like docks?
Yeah, closing out the marine, um, the Copacoue Marina Project.
I said docks, I'm just thinking, I'm sorry, Steve, didn't mean to interrupt you there, okay.
Yes, closing out the Copacoue Marina Project is, you know, um, priority right now. We did get a draft approval from DEP, we got in a butter, um, had an issue with it, so we are in, uh, we're working with mediator at MastEP to see if we can get that resolved. But once that's done.
This is the positioning of the docks, they're alleging that we are encroaching or fringing, and frankly, we believe that they're actually wrong, frankly.
Yes.
And I believe you folks more so than the butter, right, anyway, sorry.
So, uh, once that is done, then we plan on, um, it'll probably be the fall when we start driving piles and leaving everything in the water.
Good, good.
So that's, um, one of the risks and challenges, um, the next is, it's difficult to keep all, you know, dredging permits in place, um, so what I came up with was a plan to do a comprehensive dredge permit. And what that permit would be, would be all Waterways, under one permit, one general permit.
For how long would that last?
They generally last about five years and then they're renewable.
That's good.
But in the past, what's happened is, you have the North River, South River, Inner Harbor, Outer Harbor, all these, uh, the Heron River, all these different permits, and trying to keep track of all of the permits and when they expire, gets a little bit difficult, and if you miss the time, then you have to start over.
Yep.
So, my thought was to have one comprehensive dredge permit put in place, so that if we have to do a small dredge permit, in the, in a harbor over near the Maritime Center, we have it in place so that if a dredge company happened to be working in the area, we could potentially direct them over there, if we had some funds to do the dredging, and not have to wait for the permits, everything to be in place, and then we had another little project over by the Fisherman's Association or down in the North River or the South River or the Heron River.
That's good.
So, that was one of my other projects.
Good. Just turning to your budget.
Yeah.
Um, you requested one point four, or one million, four hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. Town Administrators recommended one million, three hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three, so, um, it's about a hundred thousand dollar differential, a little more. Last year was one point two, or one million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars. What's the difference that you were seeking and what was, um, what the Town Administrator's looking for?
There was, there was some items that were, uh, cut back, we were looking for repair and maintenance of eighty thousand dollars, um, he approved us at fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And it was, um, per, you know, the purchase services, the materials and supplies, we were looking for eighty-eight thousand and he, uh, the Town Administrator approved us at sixty-two thousand, part of it was, uh, you know, just supplies, general supplies, and then fuels and lubricants, gasoline for the boats.
Looks like your hauling contracts are going down, I presume that's because the, um, you're not gonna be taking them out, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But I believe we can work within what the Town Administrator approved.
We did receive a letter, um, from Waterways Commission.
Yes.
Have you folks met with the Town Administrator on that subject, or is that? Okay.
Chairman of Waterways and.
And you have, okay, all right, so that's been worked out to everybody's satisfaction, is that?
It's interesting business with the next Waterways, uh.
Okay, all right, good, then let us know and if you want, have you come back and talk to us if that's okay with you folks.
Okay, that'll work out fine.
Questions from the board?
Nope, you asked them all.
Sorry.
No, no, that's good, everything I saw. Want to give them a quick update on the vote, or do you guys know about it?
No, please, Steve?
We finalized the bid documents and it's gone out to bid, so that's where we stand on the vote. And, um, depending on who the builder is, we could receive it as soon as, um, June of twenty.
Wow, good.
Be about a year out, a little over a year out.
Fully.
Fully functional, ready to go, yes.
A lot of times it takes a long time to.
No, this would be complete.
Are we gonna have a christening?
Yes.
Good, all right. Just thinking of the board, you know, to go down and see it, all right.
Take a ride around the harbor.
All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Steve, thank you very much, gentlemen, thank you, and if need be, let us know.
Next, I think.
Oh, is it next? It is, shellfish, sorry, Steve, two ninety-five.
I think.
Well, I think we know what the, uh, we know what the, uh, what the intent is, what we're looking at with that, so we don't need to go there, let's just get right to the budget, how's that? Two ninety-five? It is level spending, which is eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, uh, that's level and, um, nothing else, anybody else, questions on the shellfish?
Nope.
No.
Good. Maybe we'll find the budget goes up in the future after we get the seeds and everything else and the beds going, so that'd be nice. Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
All right, Treasurer Collector, we're actually taking that off, I know, I got you Nancy there, um, for our next meeting, so we're gonna jump right to the police.
You're serious?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't anticipate, God bless you, that is not for me, that is not for me, we took it off only because of the timing of it, so, just want to make sure, so, that one and possibly the Finance Director, depending on our timing, we're looking at. Gentlemen, good evening, how are you?
Pretty good.
Oh, I haven't got to the number two-ten. Here we go. Here we go. So, gentlemen, what, how would you like to proceed, in other words, which, I know he probably said, cut us out of here. Two or three things that you think are important for the coming year that you'd like to at least notify the board, but more importantly, the public?
For the coming year, we're continuing to work on the school building security, but we're also going to do, uh, all the public buildings. And, uh, we've done evacuation active shooter training in the schools, no matter, we've done it once in Town Hall, we're going to do that again. We've had conversations as well with the library, uh, we want to get to all the town buildings, Pier Forty-four, we want to go over and do the rec building and, uh, you know, the senior center and others, and just make sure that we're in a good place that everybody knows what to expect and, you know, how to respond in the event that they have, not, not just a, a threatening situation, but even, you know, somebody comes in and they're angry, just how to, how to defuse it and to get on the phone and let us know. So, that's a continuing process. We're gonna look for a way, the School Resource Officer, uh, Sarah Asner has done a tremendous job. The program over the last four or five years that we've had it is exactly what we had hoped it would be in, in Moore. And, uh, she's just overwhelmed with her responsibilities now, she spends about ninety percent of her time in the campus behind Town Hall here, the two, the middle school and the high school. And, uh, what we do is we rotate offices, during the course of their shift, they'll stop and they'll get out and they'll walk through all the elementary schools. They'll do the middle school and high school as well, but, uh, they'll call out and they'll do a couple of schools a day. So there's a constant, uh, you know, not constant, but every day there's a, police crews are parked at different times out in front of the elementary schools and an officer walking around, it's good for the officers, because we get familiar with the schools. It's great for the staff, because they get familiar with some of my officers, and it's great for the kids, because they get used to seeing officers. So, in the event a police officer has to be at the school, it's not a, a bright light, they're used to seeing them up there, so, and it's not alarming to them. So we've been doing that for a couple of years, the.
Do we, do we share that salary, do we share that salary, or is it all in your budget?
I'm sorry?
School Resource Officer is all in your budget?
No, they get reimbursed for that time.
No, they get reimbursed for that time.
We share, yes, I thought, okay.
The, we're gonna research some funding options, I, we're waiting to see if the governor is gonna free up money for school res, additional school resources officers in certain jurisdictions, and if that becomes available, obviously, we're gonna apply. But my discussions with the superintendent of schools, it's just not a doable thing right now for a second school resource. We're gonna explore the possibility of, within our own budget, making a part-time second school resource officer, who can spend more time in the elementary schools. I don't want that to become a void, it's, you know, we used to have a community service officer that used to be present and do a lot of things in the elementary schools. I wanna make sure that we don't lose anything with the younger kids while taking care of the older kids, so.
That's right.
And, one of the other things that we're gonna do, as we have with the, the school security and the town building security, we have, in all of our cruisers, on the laptops, we have, if we had an incident going on at Womp Tech School, we can pull up floor plans, we can pull up doors, what doors are locked, what doors aren't, we can pull up an overview, we have all the information there as far as evacuation sites, and where, you know, kids are gonna go, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna manage it, how we're gonna stage everything. What we wanna do is, with all the public walking trails that we have now, my concern is that someday, we're gonna have a call for somebody having a heart attack on one of these trails, and we're not gonna know exactly where they are. So, my discussions, Frank Snow, I know a lot of the trails, they're putting identifiers on certain places and stuff, that's great, but I want my guys to know where those certain places are. So, we're gonna map all these trails, we're gonna have that same capability in the cruiser. So, if you have an incident down there, you can pull it up in your cruiser, you can see exactly where they are, and there you know how to, you know, expedite your response into the trail and find them, so.
Can I just interrupt one second? Wasn't the CPUC funding also to do GIS mapping?
Yes.
So, they're doing that, or will you?
We're not gonna reinvent the wheel, we're gonna use whatever they come up with.
Oh, good, yeah, don't do that.
Yeah. So, that's what we look forward to in this coming year.
Good. Well, that's, that's very aggressive, which is nice.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
None on that, no.
Just to.
Yep.
Just with things, in reading, and thank you for your write-up, 'cause it's, it really gives a lot of good backup, I just wanted to commend the department and the chief on the, the mental health training for the officers, I think that's an important leadership area, and it, and I'm glad that you're taking steps to support everybody, 'cause that is huge.
In the future, it's gonna be huge to law enforcement, you know, what we're dealing with opioid issues right now, so-called epidemic, it's, mental health is going to be the next epidemic that we deal with, and that's probably five, ten, fifteen years down the road, but it's, it's not headed in a great direction right now.
Well, good for you for acknowledging that and having training. And then I wondered if, when, what's the date of our next meeting?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. In regards to the pending legislation about making marijuana mirror the open container laws, it's, it's too late for us to vote on sending a letter in support of that to the legislature, 'cause we won't be meeting before, the deadline's, when's the deadline? The eighteen? Or I guess we could do it after?
Yeah, I mean, we could still send it.
We could do it after, 'cause we'll.
We've already voted.
So, and here you're talking about the, how marijuana in public consumption doesn't mirror the open container laws?
It's actually both.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm reading a different thing.
Yeah.
You were talking about under eighteen, never mind.
We have public consumption of marijuana by law, it's, it's in place, we put it in place last year.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, I misread that, never mind.
John?
Mike, I don't wanna start celebrating or anything, but do you think, have we turned the corner on the opioids epidemic?
Have we turned the corner on it?
Have we turned the corner?
I think we're definitely in a positive direction. I think some of the new use is, is going to be down. I think the direction that we're, we're in with the, the resourcing and getting people into treatment is one-hundred percent the right way to go. You know, we, we were doing it locally for probably the last five years with recovery coaches, the Plymouth County Outreach has been doing it for a couple of years now, and they're coming out with some stats in the, in the near future on, you know, how many kids are actually getting help, and it's, it's pretty good, it's, it's definitely working. The Plymouth County program is going national. A couple of the chiefs from Scott Allen, from East Bridgewater, and Mike Botieri from Plymouth, have gone across the nation speaking about it to this point, and Washington's paying attention to this particular approach. Now, the funny thing is, we were doing it before that, so it's, and it, and it has worked here, we know that, so.
Keep it up.
I'm thinking, you know, in the next five years, we will see a trend in a positive direction.
Good, good.
Anybody else?
No, but just, a couple little things here and there, with some overtime and clothing, but those are.
So, your numbers are, you're requesting four million forty thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars, town administrators recommended four million twenty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-three, so it's a difference of about twelve grand. And last year's was seven, three million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars, obviously, it's gone up about a little less than three hundred thou, three hundred thousand, less than that, so. Questions from the board?
No.
Karen?
No.
No, not in the budget, just, thank you for everything.
Nope, no questions.
Do you want any questions, want, want further questions for much, gentlemen?
No, I'm, I'm good with them.
Before you go, though, I do wanna make, make a comment from the board, and that is, we also, we wanna recognize Officer Brad Stanbeck, and also, also Officer Drew, these were the two individuals who were involved in the situation in Cohasset on December twenty-seventh, I think it was, a Thursday, right after Christmas, with the attempted murder, and both their work for going out there and doing a good job, and thank God they were able to assist and help the young lady who was seriously injured and in critical condition, and the board just wants to say thank you for the officers, please tell them that we recognize them and commend them for it, and obviously, it's great for the residents of Cohasset, but that's the type of people who protect the residents here in Situate, and we're very blessed and thankful to have them, so.
They, they did a great job with that, and we've actually, I awarded them department recognitions this week.
Good, they deserve it.
Acknowledgement of that, so, you know, it's not something we can talk too much about, but I wanted to know that they.
Unfortunate situation, thank heavens, she's alive, and they did a good job to help out, and, you know, whatever happens, happens, but we just wanna say from the board, please tell them, we're very proud of them and thankful.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Anything else? You wanna stay around, watch the fire department, we're gonna grill the next one really heavily.
Really sexy.
Thank you, chief, thank you deputy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief? All right, we have a lot of questions here.
Good evening. Deputy Elliott apologizes, he couldn't be, and he's all sick, like everybody else.
So, make sure, all right.
So.
I'll go through a couple of goals and challenges.
Yeah, two goals, John, that you think that are, oh, hang on, one second, that is two-twenty, so it's the next one, folks, there we go. Go right ahead, John. All right, chief.
Great, so first of all, one of my goals, after the Merrimack Valley explosion, is I'm trying to find a way, how would we deal with that? So, what I've done is, I've reached out to Columbia Gas, the national grid, to come here, I wanna do training, I wanna find out what the infrastructure they have in town is, the critical infrastructure, how they deal with it, and have a plan, a coordinated plan, that how they would come in and deal with our town. We have a high-pressure system in town, we've gotten some, you know, some contact with them, what we have for, for infrastructure. Also, I want to deal with, we've been working with dispatch, and also the police, how are we gonna deal with this? I'm, just an example, let's say we have three large areas of explosions, house fires, something happened, say it's mine at Sand Hills in Front Street, I would take three area commands, as a captain, lieutenant, and the first, do officer coming in from mutual aid, and they would assign each individual dispatch desk, you're only dealing with mine at Fire and Police, you're dealing with Sand Hills Fire and Police, and you're dealing with, so there's not a lot of confusion, you know exactly who's, the resources coming in, going out, especially for the dispatchers, 'cause if they try to do everything, take all the calls, there'd be a lot of cross-confusion there, so trying to, also waiting for the lessons learned from that whole project, what happened up there, what went well, what didn't. So, to take that information, work with the utility companies, they're coming down in March, February and March, to, to sit with us and go over, train our personnel, but also go over the infrastructure and the challenges that they had there, and how we could actually make a plan for Situate, if something similar happened to us. So, that's a big challenge, it's something we have to address, but that's sort of a general plan right now that I have, in my mind, if we had something, and I wanna take that information given, and tighten that up, and format it, and, and make an SOP and SOG out of that, so, hopefully that happens, and I think we're gonna have more safety, safeties on these systems, more than ever, some of it's already been state mandated, but going forward, I think they're gonna make this system safer than ever, so, they do, they will continue construction down here after that whole program, they just wrapped it up, up there, so, I think you'll see in the next month or two, you're gonna start seeing ongoing construction again with the gas lines, we wanna make sure, we know, and they know, where the shut-offs are, if something goes wrong, we had a situation at the, putting in the new library, and they had a four-inch gas main.
Right.
And we were there in Central Park, unfortunately, the wind was blowing southwest away from Central Park, so we didn't have to evacuate them, but a lot of houses were evacuated, but it took them a while to find out where the closest shut-off is, so I've made a recommendation to Kevin Cafferty, that anytime they do work and, and digging around here, especially big projects, they identify on, on the plans where the shut-offs are, so we know, and they know, so going into the program, they should have that identified ahead of time. So, just trying to have a plan, something like that happens, make sure we're prepared, by having these utility companies come in, and directly, and train us, and let us know what they have for infrastructure. So, that's one goal. Secondly, under emergency management, talking with a lot, a lot of stuff that Carrie brought to, to, I did read the report, and some of the challenges that we can get better, every year we try to, how could we get better, what can we learn from the storms from last year, and fortunately, we, we've done some, gotten some grants, first of all, in the shelter, we're trying, the shelter team has been working hard to try to find out, how can we improve, how can we maybe go longer terms, we basically need more personnel, so they sent out an invitation to town employees and also school employees, who would like to volunteer, be available to volunteer, Meme is gonna come down and do a shelter training, a three-hour shelter training for us, Situate only, January twenty-third, so if we get another dozen to twenty people, they would be available, and the key is, the long term, is to do shifts, to do twelve-hour shifts, Meme recommends, or whatever they decide to do, so they're working on that, and also possibility of expansion, whether it's the high school, or the junior high, I think the junior high has some, some good assets to it, I think that the, the dock rooms they have, they have no windows, if we ever got a hurricane, we could not keep the shelter open at the high schools, 'cause it's all glass, so we'd have to have some interior rooms, so if we got a large storm, where we had a hurricane, or say a Blizzard seventy-eight, we had two or three hundred people, we have to have a Plan B. We have to have a Plan B for space, we have to have a Plan B for more personnel, so that's what we're working on now, the shelter team's working on that, they're meeting again tomorrow, but they've done a great job to try to look, you know, last year, seventy-two hours, they were exhausted, but we have to do shifts, we have more volunteers, and more space, so the shelter should be self-sufficient to run as long as our citizens need it. In the end, we wanna make sure when the school's ready to get back to school, that we have alternative places, that's why the shelter, I've been talking with Linda, maybe the shelter, maybe the new shelter if it's built, or not the shelter, the senior center if it's built, why not throw some showers in there, we could use that community room, maybe a small-scale shelter, at least to remove them, we're talking to, you know, the libraries, the warming center, or someday if that gets a generator, just to have some alternatives, when the school's ready to go back, we owe it to them to move out, whether it's a dozen, two dozen people, to a small-scale facility. So, in the shelter, and again, they've been working hard at that, to get that resolved, they come up with plans, we have general plans, there are some challenges at school, some of the stuff's not on a generator, some of the kitchen stuff, and some of the heating, I did meet with the schools on this, and they did a total shutdown of the whole junior high, and they really found, they learned a lot, to find out what was actually on the gen, what wasn't, 'cause what they had specked out was not correct. So, Charlie Woods came over, met with Bob Dylan, they're estimating between five and ten thousand dollars to get it up to where we could use the cafeteria, the gym, the dock rooms, and the kitchen, to have it functional, whether it gets funded or not by the schools, I don't know, that's an option, they wanted to find out, we wanted to find out, in case we got this big storm, that we had to have room to expand. So, right now, the shelter is at the high school, we will expand in the high school, if that ends up getting done down the road, that we can use the junior high, I think it's a very, very viable source for us to use, resource to use, so, that's as far as emergency management.
Chief?
Yes?
Right there, just wanna have one comment, sorry. As you go through all of that evaluation and reconfiguring your operations, who's gonna be responsible for documenting it, 'cause that's one of the things, right, everybody holds these processes within their heads, and it's inherent knowledge, so, is that gonna be part of your action plan to redocument everything, have a binder, have a backup, like?
The working, actually, it's under emergency management, so what we wanna do, so, looking at a, Jennifer Keefe sent sort of an after-evaluation to Bob Clark, some things that she wanted to make forward.
Okay.
For the shelter, and one of the things was that, they, she believes they're so busy that, you know, it's a big burden on the shelter, direct on the, on the, on the health agent, to try to run the whole shelter, and then have to go out to restaurants, and check restaurants, and septic and all that, so, and there's, there's nothing said it has to be under the health department, so, what we're gonna do is put it under public safety, delegated Sergeant Bates is gonna be the, the shelter operations leader, Elena Chevry is gonna be his assistant, and they have about five or six core people that are under them, including the conservation agent, but less burden on the conservation, more on public safety, and then the documentation will come from them, they'll have a plan, they'll, and they'll, they'll identify places at the high school we can expand on until, and if the junior high gets done, but that, they're gonna run that whole program, and we're, we're working with them to try to get a plan now, 'cause when we get a big storm, we wanna make sure that shelter runs good, we had a situation last year, they were very tired, seventy-two hours, wanted to shut down. It's all about getting more personnel and getting shifts, go home, take a break, and come back, so, we've learned that we have space, we have plenty of food, they do a great job with the, the janitors and the food personnel over there, we've also got a handshake, and we're looking at somebody else, too, that every two or three days in a shelter, we should have somebody come in and do a whole cleaning of the place, so I've talked to the place in Green Bush, service master.
Service master.
And we have some other prices that the police use, that may be better, so see if he can meet those, meet those prices that we're trying to get, and give us a good price, so every three days, hey, everybody move out, just take a walk down the hall, let's give it one sober, so we don't spread disease, get people getting sick, and stuff like that, after you've been there for a few days, so, those are things we're trying to do with the shelter, to make sure it's, we can go long-term if we need to, we can expand if we need to, we have a plan for that, so we make sure we get shelter our personnel. Waymouth sometimes opens, it's a regional shelter, this year they did open during that high tide, and typically, they don't, 'cause they don't have the problems that we do, but you know, they had, we run a great shelter, we just have to be able to do it long-term, we are the model on the style of shore, the Waymouth shelter, they had night, it was crazy for the first two or three days, until the Red Cross came and took it over, they had no idea what they were doing. So, by the time we sent some people over there, it was organized, but that, that, they had a lot of, they had a lot to learn over there, so it was a regional shelter, so we do it better than anybody, we're just gonna be able to do it a little bit longer, and, and if we need more people, you know, we may have two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred, four-hundred people during a hurricane, you know, so we have to be prepared for that, hopefully not, but that's, that's, that's what Meme is pushing now, so when I go to the events, you do the North East as well, think big, so we gotta think big, make sure we're prepared, space, volunteers, whatever, so they sent out the email, and January twenty-third, they're gonna do a shelter training, so that's what the shelter's doing, as far as, we got an AMPG grant, and last year, the sandbags worked out well, especially downtown, the businesses, we have a grant we got, so it's a nine-thousand-dollar machine, basically, it sits in front of a Bobcat, it will do six hundred sandbags an hour with nobody touching it, so it's, it's got, it's got a machine, and you basically scoop up the sand, it operates itself, so the person just drops them, they cinch the bags, and people take them away, so you don't have injuries, back injuries of people shoveling, you know, you could do six hundred bags an hour, last year, I think we did close to two thousand bags in March, so, I think it's an expectation of our citizens now, the sandbags, especially So, I think it's an expectation of our citizens now, the sandbags, especially the businesses. So, we got this grant and it's actually half-funded by a grant. The other half is a collaboration between Situate Fire, Police, DPW, facilities pitching in for the balance. So, that's how we shared that cost. I just ordered it. It's being shipped tomorrow. We're also going to have 6,000 bags with it as well. And second, we also got a grant, part of the Fire Services Grant, with $100,000 we got for Humrock. We got that from Senator O'Connor. We got an additional $40,000 for the watering pump. Remember, we had the flooding, the retained water from 10th Ave up to 6th Ave. It was there for days. So, we got a 1,600 gallon a minute pump with a six-inch intake, six-inch discharge with 600 feet of hose. We could pump those areas clear after a storm if it's stagnant. A lot of stuff, if it stays around, it doesn't drain well. It freezes. So, we got a grant for that and that's actually being shipped as well. So, we hope to have both of those tools through emergency management through grants. Majority of it through grants coming up. And then again, the last part of resilience is the Humrock Station, working to raise that up, get it to FEMA levels to replace that station with the $100,000 grant, the $50,000 we have. And we're going to go to Capitol in the spring town meeting, asking for $275. So, the goal is to do the apparatus beta spring, to do the station in the fall. And this time next year, Humrock should be all new, resilient, four feet higher than it is now. Hopefully, ready for storms for many decades. So.
Great. Questions?
Question on the, the de-watering pump. Is that something that DPW can use for chronic areas or is it?
Yeah, it's not really meant for a household. It's a six-inch. But yeah, anywhere they need it for in town. So, it's a shared, it's a shared... Supposed to share with Mossfield and Duxbury. Duxbury got one through the Plymouth County Tech Rescue Team. So, they have one down. So, we duplicated what they got. They did the research. We got that, we were down there and Eric Noah talked with them and it seems to, it fits our budget. And we're going to be, there's a little bit of money left over. So, I'm trying to get the sandbags through that grant. The sandbags are about $6,000 and about 27 cents apiece. They're about, it's about $1,800. So, we'll have plenty of sandbags, the sandbags that fit this machine, cinches them. It's a great program. I can send you the link sometime to watch. But it'll hopefully be here in a couple of weeks. We'll do a demonstration. But the two tools that we can have, so the shelter improvements, the sandbag improvements, the de-watering improvements. And then, you know, we're looking to, working with, to improve our website and also another venue that we may use to get more people out of harm's way. We're working with the Coastal Coalition to be a host of the coast. We're trying to set up a link on our website that, listen, I have a place people can stay. The other link is, I need a place to stay. And Michelle Moran said she would coordinate all that. So, it's all confidential. They'll handle it all. All we're going to do is support the link for it. So, people can actually, if you can't afford a hotel, you don't want to go to the shelter. And most of these people know each other. You know, so listen, I didn't know you needed a place. And I think they'll get, so the goal is to get more and more people out of harm's way. And the link we use, I'm evacuating 16 people did it in January. 200 people did it and signed up for that in March. So, we get people out of harm's way. They're not going to stop Mother Nature. It is what it is. And we don't have to go in there and rescue these people during, during the middle of a storm. It's safer for us, it's safer for them.
So, that's the goal.
That's a good idea.
Questions? No?
Not yet.
All right, budget. You got questions?
No, the budget is actually pretty level-funded. Just pay a little increased nominal amounts and...
Yeah, the colas, it's 172 and change, higher, 170 and change is the cola. Some minimal things, a little bit of clothing, 1,100 clothing. We have, as far as meaning, we hired four, three paramedics this fall and we hired four more this, just a couple of weeks ago. The list came out and closed on a Tuesday before Christmas. And Jim gave us the okay to go ahead and we interviewed right away because there's only 247 paramedics on the whole state list out of 4,000. Everybody's looking for them. So, Hingham beat me to it. I don't know how. I think they jumped the gun early. But we got four paramedics for two vacancies we have and two anticipated vacancies we have. And I'm anticipating another two vacancies in the spring. Charlie Hollis is retiring. And then another gentleman may be going on disability or retiring. So, it's a challenge right now to have paramedics. And we've talked about this with the campaign we did, that I want you to be a paramedic. We have a lot of people that are taking courses now. So, hopefully in a year or two down the road, it's all going to come to fruition. We may have five or six or seven local kids and young women and women. When you go, when you're in town, you go to the top of the service list. So, we, right now, we have basically four vacancies and six people out long-term. So, it's a challenge. So, everybody's...
So, you have now four on leave and?
Three on IOD. I have three on long-term, six. I have four vacancies. Two of those we hired. I have one graduating, just graduated the fire academy in, before the holidays. Another one's graduating February 1st. Another one starts May 28th. And I just hired four additional ones. One's coming over from Noel, David Smith. You know David Smith, Sean?
Not that dude.
His father did work for the fire department years ago. He's coming over, nine-year veteran over there, wants to come to Situate. So, he'll go right to the floor.
Nice.
And then three other ones are probably getting in. They just got physicals, PATs probably July, I hope, maybe August. But I'm going to start them in March because we have to start them early because they're going to go someplace else. So, to retain that, a little more money, a little more time. But I'll have all the EMS training before they go to the academy. Once they got to the academy, they're fully trained to hit the floor. So, by August, I'm hoping that I'll have besides the two that are leaving this spring, almost fully staffed for the first time in a long time.
That's great.
So, it doesn't matter if the budget says that they're... I'm just trying to reconcile some of the notes. You have three vacant positions, yet we say we have two. So, I'm just curious which it was.
It's never changing.
It's never changing. So...
Okay, so, all right.
Yeah, that's...
I have four shifts of tents.
I mean, I know it doesn't change the bottom line. I'm just curious where we're at.
So, it's a month, that's a month plus old.
Okay, so, we've made progress since two months.
Yeah, we had just hired, we hired just before Christmas. We did it the holiday, it came down on a Tuesday, I think, just the week before Christmas. And we interviewed. We got all the stuff and we interviewed before the holidays. We got aggressive and it paid off. We got four paramedics. This town's like hauling Cohasset that are interviewing after the holidays. There's not going to be anybody left. So, we got the best of the best, us and Hingham. So, I think we have good staffing. It's going to take some time. Like I say, it's going to take eight, nine months to get them to the floor. But we did get another firefighter from Halifax as well. But he still has to go to the academy. He didn't go to the academy yet. So, people want to come here. You know, we have a good program. And I think they're close to hopefully ratifying our contract and moving forward there. So, I think good things are happening and trying to, you know, keep it positive.
Great.
I know you need to put in another question. I know.
It's fine.
I just want one quick question. I just don't understand. If we're now running, operating two ambulances 24/7, why aren't our projected revenues significantly higher? Am I not making that connection properly?
So, we're looking at possibly, he's looking at some of the numbers there and trying to see if we can get maybe additional revenue compared to the towns around us. I know the concern is people that don't have insurance, that burden. But I think there's ways we can work with that because it's only $16,000 out of over $900,000 that we get for people that don't have insurance. So, maybe you do payment plans or just charge them what you do for Medicare. But we are running two full-time ambulances. I had to go, we were staffing 11 during the day, 10 at night. I had to go to 10 during the day, but we're running two ambulances as we made through our promise. There is four at Station 1, four at Station 3, and two in Humrock. So, ideally, it would be 11. But, you know, right now with the budget, I have to run a 10. But I see the priority is EMS right now. And I'm running two ambulances full-time, 24/7. And it's worked out great. 23% of the time, we have multiple runs. So, you have four going to this call, four going to that call. And at times, we have a third call. You know, my goal down the road is to have the third ambulance ready that when I hire back to, staff the engine, ladder. But also, if we get an EMS run, you're going to take the third ambulance going out. So, that's just a, it's a matter of time. We're looking at that now to staff that ambulance with all the equipment it needs. Just had a conversation today, so that's coming in the near future. But, you know, if we can get the staff back what we need, it will have five at Station 1, four at Station 3, and one, two at Station in Humrock. So, we're trying to get back to 12 man shifts, 12 firefighter shifts with a, you know, minimum of 10 or 11. So, right now, we're at two 10s and one 9s. So, two groups, nobody's out. I still have to hire people. So, you know, the injury is, it is what it is. But we're trying to, you know, minimize that with electronic stretches, minimize that with, with the Lucas machines and stuff like that. But stuff still happens. Actually, during the Cohasset event, Dave Bordalotto, Lieutenant Bordalotto...
I was just going to make a comment.
So, he's got an injury. Hopefully, it's a couple, three weeks, but he's out. He got his hand crushed bringing that gentleman down. Pretty tight quarters.
Well, we wanted, also, since you raised it, I was going to say the same. It's that the board again wants to at least recognize his service for doing what he did and also commending him for doing it. You know, that's not a situation that firefighters are not expected to be put into. Usually, it's a different situation. And understanding that he was injured, you know, I just, I hope you would commend the same thing that we did to the police officers in saying that, you know, a job well done, beyond the expectations of the job. But we hope he's doing well and, you know.
Yeah, he's doing okay.
Thank him for doing, again, it's a situation that, you know...
Lieutenant Bordalotto, Elena Shevery, Jim Sixtiger and Luzac Araya, the four overall, the two in the EMS, two in the engine. And Dave Bordalotto's been in EMS 30 years. That was the worst call of his life, you know, just like crazy. But you don't expect to have that. But they dealt with it well, both police and fire for both towns. We did have a critical incident stress debriefing team come in on Tuesday after the event. And we invited Cohasset as well as Situate Police and Situate Fire in our ELC. So, just to get some things off the table, if they need any help, to offer that program too.
Well, it's one of those things, and then we'll get to your budget, John. But it's one of those things that I think I've talked to you before where the normal situations of public safety, whether it's police, fire, DPW to some extent, are put into situations in this day and age that 10, 20, 40 years ago, nobody would ever thought of for the most part. And, you know, a situation like this, it's one thing when it's a fire or ambulance or situation, but this one, you know...
It's a bad movie. I wouldn't even think that in a movie. But, you know, look at the details. Somebody did a great job.
Please let them know that that's, the entire board is thankful for them and appreciate it and tell them that, you know, we commend them for service for doing it. You know, clearly, they helped the woman out and that's the most important thing. And unfortunately, he gets injured.
They tried to revive him as much as they could, but it didn't happen. But, yeah, she was in tough shape.
And, and the alleged, well, any event, that individual, they did the best.
Just to answer Mrs. Curran's question, we're not going to pass the ambulance receipts until we have some history and what the two ambulances are bringing in.
Got it. Conservative again.
Yeah, we're just waiting to see what that looks like.
Okay, thank you.
So, John, you're looking, the department request for $5,9,747. Town administrator recommended $4,991,69. Just a little difference of about 18, 18, thereabouts. Last year, it was $4,818,337. So, it's...
172, 732 difference. 171, 63 is actual colas. And the $2,500 is miscellaneous, 1,100 clothing. I do have to, when I do bring these new people in, it costs me $3,000 just a fire year.
Clothing, you have to. It makes sense.
Pretty much level funded aside from the colas. So...
Questions from the board? Anyone? Chief, we appreciate it very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for everything.
We're going to pass on the Finance Director, Town and Cabinet. What's that? Oh, yeah, Public Safety. Oh, my gosh. Sorry, come on down. We'll do it quick. We have a lot of questions on this one, too. This is your first time doing it, right? Oh, well, in that case, and we've got a lot here.
This could be a while.
Do you have a goal or based on anything that, you know, for public safety, you're looking at?
We want to try to hire at least two to three, either part-time or per DM because we have a few that, at least two, that's going to be retiring, that's full-time. So, we're hoping that if we are able to do that, we can move them in, you know.
Yeah. Get them in.
Transition.
That's, that's important. There's no doubt about it. So, let's, hang on one second. We'll get to your budget right now.
How's the facility working? Anything you can find there, all the equipment and all the...
The radio is having a little issue, but they're working on that. Around 2:00 every day.
Really?
Yeah.
Sean's at lunch, then.
Were you impacted at all by the international 911 thing going on?
Yes.
We were.
Yeah, we sounded a notice on that.
I saw it, yeah.
No missed calls, but some weren't, 911 was directed to the state police instead of us. But they did come to us like they used to. But they went to the state police instead of us. But that was the worst case. But everything was informed. We were told actually in the morning that it was resolved. And then again, later on, it wasn't resolved. resolved. And that's why we sent it out to the public. Otherwise, in the morning, we would have sent it out, but they, I think from memer, said this is all set, we're all good, and then they found out it wasn't. So, we sent out the memo later in the day.
It's scary, only because, you know, so many people are relying on it, and something like that...
We can now text 9-1-1.
Yeah, yeah, which is cool, but if they take that all down, then you're like, how many people are going to say, well, pull out the telephone book? How many people have a telephone book? We're going to, the old-fashioned way.
Those magnets we have, too, do have like the direct numbers of the one-two-one-two, eight-seven-four-eight, the magnets we put out, but also, you know, the 9-1-1, we want people to use that, because if they call and it's right, we can actually see where they are. We're talking about the trails earlier, the 9-1-1 on the screen now, you can see where they are, correct?
Yeah. So, if somebody calls 9-1-1 even from their cellphone now, it will show us their location, or pretty much a small radius. And if, after like a few minutes of talking with them, we can retransmit, and we can actually see if they're, say they were lost somewhere. We can see if they're moving in the right direction, or if they're going back further.
That's cool.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Who's working on the radios? Is that the company or...
Alcom.
Alcom, yeah.
Alcom working on the radios, yeah. The one that did the infrastructure, so they have their best man here, Douglas is our guy, so he's got all of our infrastructure here, so he's on it right now.
Well, your budget requested five hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars, and Town Administrator agrees. So, no questions from my end. Any questions from, anybody on the board?
No, thank you.
Means you pegged your budget. There you go. It's perfect.
There you go.
Can't say the same with some other departments, but you know, you did a great job.
Thank you next time.
You can help him out.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night, Chief.
Thanks, Barbara.
All right, that wraps up the budget for this week. So, let's get to my, we're going back to the other stuff we have. We'll be here for about another thirty-five, forty minutes. Booth, you're okay with that?
No.
Mr. Con.
All right, we're going to move on to new business. Let me get my computer going again. Shut off. And the discussion vote, Community Choice Aggregation Committee Charge. Jim, I assume you put this together?
Do you like it?
It's great.
Because actually, I give most of the credit to Lorraine and...
Yeah, I did. I thought it was...
Michelle, they did most of the work. I added a couple of things to it, but that came up with, so if you think it's good, I did it. If it's not good, it's Michelle.
Yeah, oh, Situate, Situate, look at that, S, one, two, three.
That was Michelle.
Mine's, I guess, does somebody have this?
Yes. My only question...
Well, no, I can't get my, I went blank again.
Here. My only question was...
You let me touch it?
Good point.
You think my germs are going to get all over it?
There you go.
Thank you.
Can't read it that fast? Speed read, got it?
The question I had was, you added some language on, I guess, number two, in addition to the basic service. Is that, so is this a template that Jim, that you, or Lorraine that you used and then added, or what's the...
I believe it was a template Michelle did this.
Okay, sorry, I say, you, Michelle.
It was a template that was devised.
Yeah, I think that we just wanted to put in something, there'd be more than one option. And that's what that addition is.
Yeah, my only question was, is there a mandate to the number of people that need to be on your committee?
Five to seven.
I think you have five in here, right?
Five, two, seven.
Five to seven.
I'll keep it small.
I did read this.
You have better memory. No, I think it's great.
Questions from the board on this?
I...
I can't see if there's a motion or not, because I...
There is. Move to approve the charge for the Community Choice Aggregation Committee as written.
Motion by Ms. Curran?
Second.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous. Next, we have a discussion vote, translators, drain, layers, license renewals. Again, I don't have any in front of me, so...
We're all dead in the water here.
It just kind of vaporizes, and just blank pages.
Mine?
Mine's doing the same thing.
What do you want, drain layers?
Yeah, do you have that?
Sure, absolutely. All right.
I don't want to touch your computer.
Move to approve the renewal of a drain layers license to the following businesses: Cobra Enterprises Incorporated, Dandell Construction Incorporated, McGeekren Contracting Incorporated, PF Spencer Jr. Incorporated, Ringler Excavating Corporation, Sean Farrell Excavation Incorporated, Sporito, Topman Enterprises Incorporated, and SLT Construction Corp.
Motion by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Vignani, or Mr. Harris, strike that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
All right. The new drain layers?
Yeah.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the drain layers license for De Salandro?
De Salandro.
De Salandro Corporation.
I like the way she said it better.
I do.
Is that the Italian way?
Yeah.
Motion by Ms. Canfield, seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, is that it? For new business, other business, any liaison reports?
I have several.
Right ahead.
Really?
Do you have one?
I do have two quick ones.
That's all right.
The Planning Board will be holding another public meeting this Thursday at six-thirty at the Public Safety Complex regarding the Green Bush zoning. And the, I guess DPW is hosting drought management and reservoir update, public discussion on January fifteenth. And also, the library now has self-service holds and checkout.
Shut up.
What?
Self-service. You didn't understand that? I'm really...
I thought you said cell, I thought you said cell service.
Yeah.
Yeah. Self-service. Is that better?
Self-service.
Oh, self-service. That's much different than cell service.
It's Situate, it's shell service. That's it.
She-shell, she-sells, down by the seashore. All right. Any other liaison updates?
Uh, no.
Tony?
Just one, a quick one. Last week, met with the, one of the Sister City groups, the Quark Sister City Group, and one of the women from the Cultural Board was there, and I was wondering, did we put anything in the budget for those types of groups to do initiatives, like the cultural group that has to do certain funding for stuff? I mean, it's really short. It's only like a couple thousand dollars or something.
We don't have anything specific in our budget, but as Nancy said, EDC has a budget they could use some of that stuff for.
Yeah, I think we may want to look at it, because I think part of, I think we may have to, or they may think that there has to be some sort of anomaly there, like we do for the disabilities one.
Yeah.
For five thousand.
But again, it's relative short money, but there's, there's things that go on that...
If the numbers come out that we have some extra money, then we could put some money in.
We should probably create a line item for them, and maybe we...
Hands would be tied if they didn't have any money. They really couldn't do a lot.
Could we do a line item through the EDC? I'm saying that they, as a part of the EDC...
Or we could take part of their funding.
Funding and say that that should be earmarked for.
Yeah.
I mean, because I agree with you. I think, you know, they're going to probably do more promotional kind of tourist...
Well, they want to run events, they want to, they want to do trainings, they want to do educational things, and they're just...
We'll know, Martin Luther King Weekend, where some of these numbers are going. That's the MMA. We'll get a better idea on the health insurance number. We'll get, the governor will tell us what local aid's going up, and they'll do a preliminary cherry sheet then next week, so...
Good.
We'll have some new numbers, and they might pay a couple bucks in there.
Right. Yeah, so Nancy, if you can just make a note that we come back to that, it's, you know, a lot of the people that do it themselves pay out of pocket, and I don't think that that's fair for the, for those initiatives.
Yeah.
I agree.
Great. That's it.
Anything?
No. Affordable Housing Trust is meeting tomorrow night to discuss, they're putting in a request for funding from CPC, so, which I think is good.
Anything, their request is for any special, or just...
No, just to start, you know, seed money, really, because once you have seed money, you can apply for grants, net match money. There's just a little bit of, everything's been wiped out since the support of the Central Park, the Lawson Senior Housing, so there's nothing left. So, it's really just to start building it back up again.
John?
Nope.
No, you just kind of, just reminded me, at some point, we should probably try to, maybe Lorraine, I'll talk, if it's okay with the board, touch base with the Senior Housing Authority about, you know, the prospect of...
Situate housing.
Situate.
It's a shell.
It's a seashell, she-shells.
Yeah, we need a update.
About possibly swapping land from the driftway with the land that's behind the Central School. And officially try to see if that's something, you know, we can talk further about, if they're willing to do it. That would probably take Jim a vote at town meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, that's something that, I guess we probably couldn't put on this one. It's too late, unless we open the warrant, right?
Aye.
Just a discussion that, you know, maybe we should think about sooner than later.
Sounds good.
All right. Correspondence?
A few things. We had, received a letter from John Starr, a resident on Sachin Cliff, who wanted to thank our Situate Recycling Center foreman, Patrick Kelly. He inadvertently threw away his expensive remote car keys, and Mr. Kelly was able to sort through the trash and find it for him.
Just before you go, though, this is really important, because what had fallen into the bin was actually taken and then dumped into a larger bin. So, he not only, you know, get into one bin, he went into another bin, which is asking an awful lot. And I just thought, I have to say, again, you talk about your town employees, and you know, a lot of people say, or have these preconceived ideas about them, but you know what? That's the service that you're looking. I imagine the guy lost his keys. Too bad. It happens.
You know how much he lost keys?
No.
Well, three hundred dollars.
Yeah. So, here's a guy jumping into dumpsters, helping a guy to save three hundred bucks, and that's, you know...
Really nice.
Instead, usually, he's doing a lot of other things around there, you know, because he's the foreman of the whole transfer station. So, I have to say, good for, good for Mr. Kelly, because you know what? That's, that's, again, beyond the call of duty in many respects. That's very nice of him. So, we commend him.
There will be, I believe it's Chamber, hold on, let me get up.
Yes.
The Chamber is hosting a CIPSY and Suites, and I said that right, on Thursday, seventeenth, January seventeenth, at six PM at the Mill Wharf. It's their annual meeting. Chamber members are asked to arrive at five forty-five to vote for the new board. Sister City Project is announcing, the next film will be January tenth, at seven o'clock at St. Mary's Parish Center, and it's called The Matchmaker. And that's really cool. It's ten dollars entrance, or if you're a member of the Sister City, it's eight dollars. Patrick O'Connor, Senator Patrick O'Connor, has drafted, has sent a letter to the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, respectfully asking for a meeting at your convenience between the Town of Situate and the Senator's Office to talk about, and Jim mentioned this earlier, trying to loosen up the three million dollar bond that was earmarked for water infrastructure projects. So, thank you, Senator O'Connor. National Grid has informed us that they will be in town slated early winter two thousand and nineteen and completed by spring two, twenty twenty, to replace some transmission lines in town. Another, same letter from Patrick O'Connor, and I already announced the meeting, public meeting for the water drought. We